Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, December the 7th, 2021. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. Actually, sorry, I have a statement to read first. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask our city manager, in this case, our substitute tonight, Mr. Selling, to give a brief explanation to the public. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Selling, Public Works Director, standing in for Lorenzo Hines, the city manager. So, good evening, everyone. Although the meeting of the Galt City, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person pursuant to applicable health orders, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the raise hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment, or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also use the lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. So, for tonight, our silent prayer and flag salute this evening, I have asked a couple of special guests to say a few words and to lead us in the prayer and the flag salute in honor of the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor today. I would like to introduce Mr. Bob Ballyer and Mr. Leroy John Adams. If you would like to step up the front here, gentlemen, or to the podium, yes. Mr. Ballyer is a retired Army veteran who served overseas, including Vietnam and Germany, where he was awarded the Bronze Star for meritorious service. Mr. Adams is a retired Navy veteran who served on a nuclear ballistic submarine, the USS James Adams. Mr. Adams, I'm sorry, the USS James Madison. Mr. Adams now serves as a chaplain for the VFW Post 67 and District 17, among other things. Gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. Mr. Ballyer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council for having me here today. Today, December 7th, 2021, marks the 80th anniversary of the attack on our nation at Pearl Harbor. The attack killed 2,403 service members and wounded 1,178 more, and marked the beginning of the U.S. entry into World War II. Ultimately, the following four years, almost a half a million brave men and women would give their lives for our country. Please rise and join me in a moment of silence to honor and remember Now, please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again for the opportunity to honor these men and women.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your service. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Versus Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 11th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Now, move on to item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do we have anything from the council this evening? Okay, and we will move on to item C, Public Comment. I will be opening the public comment for one minute as the city clerk reads our statement, and we will allow time for those on Zoom or on telephone to, a chance to comment if they wish. Tina?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Written public comment may also be submitted via email prior to the meeting to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Do we have any public comment in the chambers tonight?
I have Mary Martinez from the GCCC.
Okay, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Ralph Cortez. I'm with the Galt Community Character of Coalition. The Galt Community Coalition is a nonprofit organization that has been around since 2007, promoting good character traits that were chosen by our community and recognizing individuals and groups who demonstrate those character traits. Today, we are presenting the Galt Responsibility 2021 Award to Steve Santos. The narrative, Steve Santos. My neighbor, Steve Santos, has taken a great personal responsibility by the way he cares for and takes care of me and my neighbors in Galt. We have lived here in Galt for 18 years. Steve has adopted not only us, but also everyone towards the end of our block. If someone needs a hand, he is there. In our case, we both have limitations. We both use walkers and are unable to lift heavy objects. For the last two months, we were left without a car. Steve has mended our walkers. He moves our waste cans from the backyard to the front curb each week. He gave my wife rides to the supermarket to get food for us. He is always a call away. For the other neighbors at the end of the block, he always is there to help. He also brings a sense of urgency to our, a sense of security to our, and justify his honor. Sorry. Steve's creed can be summed up with the following: Always do your best. Be accountable for your choices. This is what Steve Santos is about, outstanding choices. Steve Santos is a true role model for responsibility for our Galt community, and he was nominated by Steve and Annie Butler.
Are they here? Yeah. Great. Thank you.
in the chambers?
I have no other cards.
Okay. Do we have any hands raised online or anybody on the phone?
Nothing online.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to now close the public comment, and we will proceed on to item D, Presentations. Let them finish their photo real quick. All right. Our presentation this evening is from the Galt Historical Society regarding the 2019-2020 Community Benefit Grant Report to the City Council.
Mayor Farmer, city council, members of the staff. I'm Janice Barsetti Gray, President of the Galt Area Historical Society, and speaking today of the grant that we had received, 2019-2020 Community Grant to renovate the Ray, the Liberty Schoolhouse that we moved to the Ray Museum. I believe you all should have copies of what I'm going to be doing and then some pictures. The Galt Area Historical Society wishes to thank the city council and the city of, and the city of Galt for the $4,000 community grant that we received in 2019-2020. While our plan to renovate the one-room Liberty Schoolhouse was intended to begin in 2020, we all know that everything came to a standstill during the COVID shutdown after March. In 2020, we had the schoolhouse moved from Fourth Street to the Ray House Museum at a cost of $8,500. The cement and the new foundation was donated to us by former council member and mayor Darrell Clare. The foundation and labor was donated by Basinger Concrete of Galt. We purchased $4,913 worth of material and lumber needed to renovate the schoolhouse with this community grant. Those materials are being stored, those materials are being stored at the McFarland Living History Ranch where we have our workshop. We have some windows and wood at the McFarland Ranch that we are repurposing for this project as well. We need to ensure that the renovation is as close to the 1854 period as possible. During the shutdown, we were unable to gather enough volunteers to start on the work. To speed up the project along with our volunteer efforts, we will be hiring out for roofing and some construction work beginning the first of the year. We have been accumulating donations for the interior. We have something like a potbelly stove. We have desks, and so we're working on accumulating a lot of that. We actually have a piano that was donated to us as well. And we're continuing our fundraising to complete the renovation of this 1854 schoolhouse. And as I said, I've attached pictures of the Liberty Schoolhouse. One was on the day it was moved, one as it sits. That was prior to the foundation. And then the, the older picture is a picture of the Telegraph School, and I'm guessing that that particular picture was probably in about 1925 because my father and my aunts are in that picture. But the schoolhouse in the background is what our plan is, the school would look like, a one-room schoolhouse. And I'm not sure if everybody knows how, in those days, there was little, these little one-room schoolhouses all over the countryside because they didn't have public school funds in those days, so they just had little schools and people would support it. This particular school, the Telegraph and the Elliott School, when they were closed, then that was when Oakview School was started. They all went to Oakview then at that point. It was all out in that area. So, again, the Historical Society would like to thank the city council and the city for affording us these funds to help us with this renovation, and we're really hoping that it will complete this year. We also want to, again, thank the Hinky family for donating the schoolhouse to us. And we're hoping to get it done soon because I know we have people that want to, want to look at it during tours, and so we're always looking for volunteers to help us with this renovation. So, does anybody have any questions for me about it?
Any questions for Ms. Barsetti from the council?
No. Okay, well, thank you. No?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I just wanted to thank you, Janice, for the work you and the rest of the Historical Society do. I think preservation of what our community is and was is important, and so thank you for all your work, and if you could pass it along to the Board of Directors.
I will.
I appreciate everything you do in keeping this community close-knit, tight, small, and in the way it, the way it was.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, it is very important to us, and I know most of you on the board are members, and, and we do our best to try to preserve the history. And I, I hope that at some point you'll get a chance to, to get a, to go take a tour of the Ray Museum because it's been completely redone, and it really does look like a museum now. Our historian, Dan Tarnaski, has done a wonderful job where you can actually walk through it and see the history of Galt and understand it. So, again, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all that you guys do. Anybody watching even online, if you haven't had a chance to visit the Ray, it is, it is beautiful the way it's been done. He did, Mr. Tarnaski did a fabulous job with that. So, look forward to seeing the schoolhouse done someday. And if any of you watching are handy with a hammer and you want to reach out to the Historical Society, I'm sure they could use your help. All right. Moving on to item E, Reports by the city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing, I did attend the Sacramento Transportation Authority on November 18, 2021. There was a very basic agenda. There are a lot of item badge and consent calendars. The only thing I'd like to report, we adopted a same resolution we was adopted here in the last council meeting, adopted resolution initiating the renewal of Sacramento Banded Vehicle Service Program. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Papino.
I don't have anything as the Air Quality District Board does not meet in November and December.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. We, we have a SACOG board meeting coming up next Thursday, and so I'll have more to report on that coming up. We did meet in November on the 18th, right after our last council meeting, and heard quite a few opportunities and a presentation about opportunities to address infill development. And, and so we heard from the city of West Sacramento about what they've done to not expand their boundaries, but really work those interior properties. And so, some of the ideas that came out of it were, you know, really looking at design plans, or design standards up front, so that when people come in, the community has already had the input about what they, what the community wants in particular infill development areas. And so, that's one of many items that was brought up. So, I've been working with community development about bouncing some ideas about how possible some of these things that have been, that have been done in other jurisdictions would work, if it would work here. And I really like the idea of, it's called by right, you know, building. And so, they would know going in what the community wants and what that would look like. And so, instead of having, you know, each item come up as it's being built, perhaps there might be an opportunity. there might be an opportunity to bring people together ahead of time and say, hey, we have this piece of property here. There's no plan for development on it. What do you think would be good here? And so that might be a different way to approach it. So anyhow, that was one thing. And then we, we also heard from the, about trails and bike master plans and how to connect those. And I think we're doing a pretty good job here in our community with our, the development, the slow development that's been going on, but really trying to connect those things and, and being cognizant of the fact that, you know, a trail is as good as it, as it's looped, right? And so if it ends and you have to go back, it's not as, you know, it's, it's not as going to be used as much as it would be if it went somewhere. And so anyhow, just some ideas about as we move forward, what we can look at to make sure that our trails and bike paths are connecting up. So. And then again, I'll report back next time on our next board meeting. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. I myself, we rescheduled our Galt Public Safety Meeting, and so I don't have to report on that. I did attend the Galt Youth Commission Meeting last night after our special council meeting. And it's always a fun, fun meeting to attend. We discussed our involvement with the, with the Christmas Parade here in Galt, which was, the committee did a float, and we're very happy to participate in that. And we discussed some projects that we're working on and an upcoming event after the first of the year. And some various other things, but it's always a lively time. If any of you want to tune into that meeting, it's very interesting watching the young people around that meeting. And that's all I have. So we will move on to our consent calendar. All right. I'm going to open the public comment for the consent calendar. I will leave it open while I read the consent items. If you are on Zoom or on the phone, like to call in for a public comment, you may please do so. It is recommended that items one through five be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Item one is the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16th, 2021. Item two is receive and file warrants for a period ending November 24th, 2021. Item three is AB 361 Resolution Making Findings Necessary to Continue to Conduct Brown Act Meetings by Teleconference. Item four, January 4th, 2022 City Council Meeting Cancellation. And item five is the Treasury Report for the period ending October 2021. Do I have any comment online or on Zoom?
No public comment.
Okay. I'm going to leave the public comment open for about another 20 seconds. If you'd like to comment, you may do so. Again, if you have a comment, you can raise your hand if you are watching on Zoom, or you can call in by phone. All right. With that, I will now close the public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved 5-0. All right. We'll now move on to item G, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our regular calendar. Our first item tonight is going to be from the Public Works Department. Subject is the C Street Enhancement Project, CIP 520F, Final Design Selection. Mr. Selling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and council members. So as the clerk pulls up the PowerPoint presentation, I'll kick it off and then we'll hand it off to staff and our consultant to complete it. So this item is for consideration for the final design selection of the C Street Enhancements Project. You may recall back on October 5th at the council meeting there, staff presented two options for, that had basically been vetted through the outreach process, through a couple of workshops and a, and a field walk and, and various other one-on-one type interactions that, that staff had with, with some of the fronting businesses and property owners. Let's see, next slide here. So for tonight's agenda, we'll do a, a quick overview, kind of revisit the project and then summarize the, the outreach and the feedback that staff received through that process. We'll cover those initial design options that I just mentioned, those two initial design options. And then we'll ask for the council to consider approval of the final design option based on the feedback that staff received at the October 5th council meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it now over to Mr. Trung Trinh, our Senior Engineer for the project and City Project Lead.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council. My name is Trung. I'm engineering the Public Works Department. And I, I manage this project. I work with our consulting team here, Brian and Tim, Somas Team, and, you know, working to deliver this project. I report to Mike and Mark. I just want to, before I hand over, Brian, I just want to make a note about the public outreach. You know, Brian's going to mention something about the work that we completed to date. But, you know, recently, based on what we've approved or we, we were going with on the October 5th meeting to what we have now, you know, there are some changes that you'll see here that Brian will, will talk about. But we actually went out and did some additional outreach. We met with the store manager of the Save Mart, Joe Baptista, and also Christie Newport from the Farmers F and M Market and also the Starbucks, just to kind of let them know what we're doing. They're, they bought off on basically what we're, we're trying to do. I also reached out to the Dry Creek Liquor Store right there on Seventh and C Street. And there was some pushback on what we're trying to do with that, with this project. I explained to them that, you know, you know, based on the grant, we're trying to, you know, improve multimodal and the landscaping part of it. But, you know, the gentleman is here today, so I'm sure he'll, he'll make comments. And at the end of the presentation, we can address questions that you guys may have. So I just want to note one final thing on the public outreach is that after what happens today with the selection, the outreach doesn't stop. We will continue to outreach. We've told the Chamber of Commerce and along with the business owners on C Street that during construction, it's very disruptive and we'll be working with them to make the construction as least disruptive as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Trung. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. What I wanted to do today was just briefly just talk about the two options that I think you already are aware of, and we, you, you had a discussion on that on October 5th. The option one, which you can see at the bottom of the screen, so that one was the first option that we looked at, and it really included a lot more of the aesthetics improvements, including a lot of median work with some landscaping and trees in the medians. When we did that, it is obviously going to reduce the amount of access that was occurring to, which occurs to each of the driveways. And, and both of these options still, still achieved all of the goals in terms of creating a, improving the alternative modes of transportation. In other words, enhancing opportunities for bike facilities by putting in class four bikeways for both options. But the, the option two, which was the one that, which was, both of these were presented obviously at the second workshop as well, but the option two was really focused more in terms of creating a two-way left turn lane in the middle and probably something more of a stripe, a, a, enhanced two-way left turn lane in the middle, which allows maximizing the amount of access to each of the businesses. But when you do that, obviously, there's a reduction in the amount of, of greenery and aesthetic improvements we can make in the median. So there's a balance that we try to achieve with that. But the option two was really the one that was the more favored option as we, as we found out in that, in the public, second public meeting. So what I want to do now is just go through and look at that initial design option that we presented, and I'm going to break it up into three different segments. So the Western segment, which will be basically from Sixth through to Lincoln, then we'll go from Lincoln through to probably around about the Denny's, and then we'll go from the Denny's across to Civic in three different segments. So as you can see on this, this is the Western segment, and the initial design option two did have a two-way left turn lane and still allowed access to all the driveways as we went through this option between, between Seventh and Sixth Street. There was a little bit of aesthetic improvements in terms of median landscaping on the, on the west side as you enter into the Old Town and Historic Town. But there was no crosswalk, and we did receive that feedback that there's no crosswalk across Seven, at Seventh Street. So now I'll show you just some enhancements or some modifications we're proposing for this, for this segment. So the first, first, first modification is on the left-hand side where we've extended the, the median a little further, just closer to where the access road, access driveway would go into the mowershop. And then the second improvement we're proposing is to put in that crosswalk on the west side of Seventh Street. We believe that's going to improve the safety for, for the pedestrians through there. And also we're proposing to put some bulbouts in that area, which the bulbouts is basically where you extend the curb return and makes the crosswalk a little shorter. And it's, again, it improves, improves the safety for the pedestrians and also reduce, tends to reduce speeds of traffic as they're going through there because it's, it's more of a traffic calming measure. And then we're also proposing to place a median with some landscaping in that first segment as you're going, as you're coming away from west from Seventh Street. One of the challenges with that, though, is that we are, that would impact the, the left turn movement going into, for example, the liquor store to the south, which Trung mentioned earlier. He had discussions with the property owner there. And as a mitigation for, for that, excuse me, we were thinking of, of what options could we come up with. And basically, the left turn would then have to come down from Seventh, come down, down Seventh Street and then turn into the liquor store. And we would have to do some modifications to the striping. And obviously, we'll have to look at this a little more closely in terms of engineering to make sure it was feasible, but that would be a mitigation measure that we could take and, and still make this work. Then I'm going to talk about the middle segment. The main change here that we are proposing is, if you look here on the west side of Maple Street, the crosswalk that we proposed during the initial design, it did kind of block the driveway right at the insurance, at the insurance company's driveway there. So we'd be proposing is to move that crosswalk to where the existing crosswalk is today. What that does is it does allow the driveway to stay open to the Galt Insurance Company. And then it also gives us a little more opportunity to create a median landscaped area as you're going west, east away from that crosswalk. So it sort of improves two things at once. Then on the east, eastern segment, yeah, this one is, the way we proposed it with the initial design option was to allow for pretty much all movements going in and out of the driveways, going up to the Save Mart and down into the Starbucks and the bank property in the middle driveway there, as well as on the west and the east side, where obviously Civic Drive is a traffic signal operated entrance anyway. So what we did is we did do some traffic counts, and I should have mentioned this earlier. Anyway, we did, we did do pedestrian and traffic counts at this, as well as at the, at Seventh Street and at Maple as well. So we did various traffic counts through here, both during the Wednesday lunch hour, during the, the market hours, and then also on a Friday evening. And we did see a lot of potential conflicting movements coming out of the Starbucks driveway, turning left. And then this is a fairly well-used left turn movement that comes out of that central driveway and turns left and goes to the east. And so our concern with that is you've got so many conflicting movements going on. And with our proposed design right now, where we have a median and we're going to have possibly a monument sign or some sort of entrance as for the gateway entrance into this area, we're concerned that there's going to be a safety concern right here with all those conflicting movements and with additional landscaping. So what we're proposing was, is to actually block the left turn movements, to not allow left turn movements out of here, which actually coming out of Galt, out of the Starbucks and, and bank building were fairly low in the numbers. And people that were coming into this area would, would, would have to come out and go into Civic, go up Civic and go back to the traffic signal, which is a far more safe option in terms of reducing the number of potential conflicts. So this would be a small, little raised median that would be in the middle here, and that would restrict those left turns. At the same time, we also have increased the pocket, the, the amount of greenery just a little bit from what we proposed previously on both of these median landscaped areas. And we also noted that we, there would be a potential for electronic billboard sign probably down in this quadrant down here, but we still need to determine exactly where that would be. And that the city could use that for just highlighting upcoming events and things like that, which would be, which would be useful because it's, it's really going to be a gateway entrance into the city. I think that's all I wanted to talk about. I think the next steps, Mike, did you want to talk about the next steps?
Yeah, I can take that. So thanks, Brian. So the next steps pending council's consideration of this final design option tonight would be to move into the final design phase, and we, that also encompasses doing the environmental clearance for the CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. And so that, we're looking at a timeframe. We'll probably be looking at about nine months or so to complete that, that phase. And then put the project out to bid around the fall next year. You can see that October-November timeframe and award the project, and then move into construction the following spring in 2023. And we estimate you're probably looking at about six months or so timeframe there to complete construction. So that would be the, the schedule going forward, again, pending tonight's consideration. And with that, I think we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Selling, and thank you to the gentlemen. I apologize. The name, Ms.? Yes. Thank you, Brian. Sorry. Thank you for your overview of, of these changes. I, I think since we do have one of the business owners in the audience that wants to give a public comment, I, I would like to maybe hear his comment. We'll, we'll have public comment after our discussion as well, but would it be okay if we can hear him speak? It would probably help our discussions as well. Do we have a public comment in the audience regarding this? This item, Tina?
I have not received a card.
Sir, if you would like to fill out one of the cards there, the speaker sheets, and just come over and hand it to the clerk, and then we can call on you to speak. Again, if you're watching on Zoom or online and you'd like to public comment by phone or by raising your hand on Zoom, we will allow that after some of our council comments.
Counsel? He's going to show up the PowerPoint, but I can't run the timer in that, so I'm going to run it.
Okay. Okay. Santa. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and state your name and.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Mandeeb Dillon. I'm the representative for Dry Creek U.S. Liquor. We've been in business and in town since 1987, and it's been great to be in Galt. And we've made some recent modifications to the business as I've taken over from my father. In the last two years, we've had a stimulating vigour. In the last two years, we've had a stimulating vigorous increase in business. We're probably one of, if not the most, traffic-heavy businesses on C Street as of late, as of the last couple of years. We see anywhere from 7,000 to 9,000 vehicles on a busy weekend. In, in addition to Stratton's Pizza and the Taco Truck being all on that Seventh Street corridor, even nine months ago, I'd asked the city or the planning department to assist us in parking on Seventh Street. I asked for some diagonal parking because there's so much traffic. There's a lot of children that come out of Stratton's Pizza and go over to the Taco Truck and, and go to their vehicles. Seventh Street traffic on a Friday and Saturday evening is very heavy. There's a lot of cars parked up and down. Even my parking lot does not suffice the traffic that we have at our business. And so after looking at the modification and adding a, the, the additional curb, or sorry, the additional median on C Street around the Seventh Corner, I feel disrupts the traffic flow into my parking lot and would not help traffic flow. So one of the, the modifications is to modify the circulation in our parking lot. And as of right now, our parking lot's one-way. You, you get off of C Street and you're able to go onto Seventh Street. It's a one-way parking lot. Currently, there is no way for there to be two-way traffic in our parking lot. We have a lot of construction trucks that show up after work. And if you've got one construction truck and a regular vehicle parked next to it, two-way traffic cannot exist in our, in our, in our parking lot. It just, there's no space for it. So our parking lot would have to become a strictly one-way traffic, which would come from Seventh leading to C Street. Heading off the freeway, which most people do when they get off of work and they're heading into our liquor store, they're coming west on C Street and they typically make that left turn off of Street, C Street into our parking lot. If we cut off that access from that parking lot, from the parking lot off of C Street, they're now heading down Seventh, which is adding to the traffic on Seventh that there is now because of the Taco Truck and because of Stratton's. I feel that it's going to cause a lot of backup on C Street. And because you've got the Lincoln Way stoplight, I feel that a lot of cars would back into that stoplight. And, and this is more of a concern on Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings when our stores the most busiest, as is the pizza place, as is the Taco Truck. And if we're trying to mitigate traffic here, I feel that adding the landscape median on Seventh and C Street does not help traffic. It's going to increase it, not, not increase it, sorry, it's going to disrupt the flow of traffic. As of right now, because of how many vehicles pause on C Street to enter into our parking lot because of traffic headed east on C Street, if, if we introduce the landscaped median, it doesn't allow for cars to pass on the right of a vehicle as it's yielding to, to come into our parking lot because that, that, that passageway is going to become so narrow. I feel like there's going to be large backups over across Seventh Street and even Lincoln Way. I'm, I'm all for beautifying Galt. I mean, as you've seen our structure, our building, I've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in remodeling it to, because that's the introduction to, to downtown Galt. And I believe that this would, this is a great improvement that we're proposing. It's great for the city of Galt, it's great for the C Street corridor, but I feel like the median there is going to do more harm than good for traffic.
A question for you, sir. First of all, I'm very familiar with your, I, I've been, we used to go there when I was a kid and buy candy, probably from the previous owners, but.
Yeah.
Do you, how much percentage of foot traffic do you think you guys get as in addition to vehicle traffic?
We are very small on foot traffic. I would say somewhere around 5%. I've never really had to calculate it, but we're very small on foot traffic.
Okay. Does any of the council have a question for?
I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. One, I'd be curious of traffic flow, any studies that have done in the past and the ones that they did so we could get a better grasp of where traffic is headed in that area. On, on, I'm familiar with that area as well. There's no parking on the mobile gas station side, right? Because it's all basically entrance into the gas station. And the street's rather wide. Can they look into, the engineering firm look into making diagonal parking on that section that might give some more flexibility and more parking, which is always, you know, something people are looking for? But that might add a little more flexibility to the design. Probably would cause striping, need striping. I don't believe that street has any, you know, that would maybe shift the street a little bit, so to speak, but you could add, instead of two, you could have seven, two or three parking spots, you could have seven or six or seven spots there. That's all, do you understand what I'm saying, trying to say?
I'd actually propose that to the planning department, and they had come out and done a study and said that there was not enough space to do diagonal parking there on the west side of, of Seventh Street.
That, that, that street is or is not as wide as further down west of C Street where we do have diagonal parking? And that's more, you know, that's, well, it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I don't know the dimensions on, on the roadway width. I would assume that when they did that analysis of the gentleman's talking about, that they looked at, you know, and measured it and, and determined that it wasn't feasible, it sounds like. So I don't know if staff has any familiarity with that, but.
Well, what I think is interesting is across the intersection from C Street on Seventh, you do have diagonal parking and the street's exactly the same width. So how would that be the case?
The, the Stratton's Pizza has a diagonal parking in front of it.
And that too, right.
And allowed on the other side as well.
Right. What I was referring to was the north side of, of C, Mr. Selling, on the, next to the, the, the store there in the corner. There's diagonal all down there. Yeah, and there has been for as long as I can remember. What, let me ask you a question, sir. Would, would that be a compromise if we were able to facilitate something like that in, in, in trade for, because what I, what I remember talking about the discussions with the, with the, the crosswalk was that we felt there was a need for the crosswalk at that spot because of the amount of foot traffic that I was aware of there. And so there is no crosswalk, we didn't feel it was very safe. So that, I felt like that was a benefit to the businesses like yourself by doing that. So that was, you know, we were adding that. But then, of course, by doing that, then you create the, the need for the protections with the landscape and such. So I guess if we, if none of us have any further questions for you, we can call you back up if we do, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
So can, continue with, with that. I mean, I, I thought that, you know, I do like the idea of having the crosswalk there compared to down by Sixth Street, which is what the original idea was. I do understand, you know, it's tricky with businesses on both sides. And I think this was the number one priority going into this project was not try to hinder people's, you know, access as, as little as possible. I personally think if I'm traveling, and I've been to the liquor store, I don't frequent there a lot, but I do occasionally go, and I've probably been there, you know, in my life many times. If I'm heading west on C Street, I typically would turn onto Seventh and then pull up on the parallel parking on the sidewalk there and go. And I, I find it funny that I would actually cross the intersection and then turn left into there, but again, that's just me. I know that he does a lot of business, you know, people parking on the street and there's a lot of business with the Taco Truck. So, you know, I, I understand his concerns. Let me ask a question. So this was a modification done because of the letter from the Air Quality Board asking for more greenscaping, is that correct?
This, I mean, in part, yes. I mean, they were requesting more, more aesthetic enhancement, but also, this was also a modification based on the conversation that, that took place, the discussion that took place at the October 5th meeting. So was to primarily, it was, as you, as you noted, Mayor, was to provide that crosswalk there at Seventh Street. And staff and the consultants, we did concur on the amount of foot traffic crossing there, whether going to the gas station or to Stratton's or, or to some, at least to the, to the liquor store and the Taco Truck. So there was a great deal of, of pedestrian traffic observed there at multiple instances. So it was to provide that. And then it, it kind of was a little bit, you know, to provide protection for those pedestrians crossing was to provide the bulbouts at the corners and then to provide that, what we call refuge island anyway, in the median area there. And so to take advantage of that and, and provide the, the additional landscaping. From that, and again, based on observations and appreciate the gentleman's comments about the amount of traffic he gets on the weekends, the, the observations from the consultant and staff were that you could potentially mitigate it, and, and he makes a good point about construction trucks. Again, we'd have to take some measurements in his parking lot to see what kind of drive aisle could be provided there as proposed with the, the modified circulation that you see. And maybe the consultant has some information on that. I, I don't know the, the dimensions, but if they can provide some more detailed response on that. But was, as, as you stated, you know, to parallel along Seventh Street and/or to utilize the revised angular parking in the lot. So I think the other possibility was, might some patrons, if, if it was, you know, overflowing, utilize the, the parking area just further west there at the bank where they could make that left. So, but absent that or any specific detailed information from staff or the consultant, that was, that was kind of the, the driver for this.
So I know I remember the conversation in being out there on foot and going over all this, and I'm going to use your little thing you gave me here. So, but originally, so we decided to put the crosswalk here, it was going to be protected by the little bulbout on the east side, and then on the west side, there was going to be a small bulbout to protect the people crossing. But that would still allow people coming and be able to turn left into his parking lot because they could come around the bulbout. What's changed is now these trees have been added because of the request for more greenery. So what, what would have been a functioning, in my opinion, functioning crosswalk with the protections would have still allowed the turn now has been eliminated by the three trees. I'm just talking about, I, I understand, I would love to see more trees. I just don't know that for me to see two more trees is worth, you know, hindering a business access and, and obviously a very, a very busy business. And I can, I agree probably with everything he said. I mean, I can't verify his numbers he gave me, but I would say it's a very busy, busy area for sure. And so, but again, this wasn't something that was proposed until right, and, you know, until we got this modification. So I, I, I mean, personally for me, I don't, I, I don't, you know, I still feel like people can turn left and access off Seventh. But again, I think the goal of this is to beautify the city without, without compromising, you know, hindering businesses in a large way. And I think you guys did a really good job on option two, in my opinion, for the most part, really keeping everybody's access points available with just very small little things that I didn't think were a big deal. But now with a couple of these modifications, I think we're kind of going backwards a little bit. I, I don't know if there's a compromise with greenery. Maybe we can put some greenery somewhere else so we don't have to put it there. I don't know, that's my thoughts. Any of the council want to jump in on this?
We do have a public comment if you want to.
Okay, in the, in the, in the room? Okay, let's hear that.
No, I'm sorry, online.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, let's hear, let's hear what we have right now.
This is Mr. Jerry Sauter.
Go ahead, Mr. Sauter.
Can you, go ahead and speak?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear him, counsel? Okay. Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Jerry Sauter, Galt resident. I do want to thank the council and the city staff for all the outreach on this project. I, I know that I attended several of the meetings that, that were held and appreciate the, the options put forth. I, my only comments would be an echoing Mayor Farmer that I think it's important to have the, the beautification and the multimodal, but also not impact the, the businesses. And we've already heard from one of our, our businesses in town. I'm also concerned about some of the modifications over by Galt Plaza because their driveway with the stoplight, if you look, it's a, it's a three arrow, it's a right-left straight. They have one lane. And even when that light works properly, some of the time, that traffic backs up well past the Taco Bell and that funny little curve and everything. So I, I, I really think that the feedback was that option two provided the access for the businesses while also providing the multimodal and the additional beautification for C Street. And so I would tend to agree that, that the additional modifications are, are already causing concern if we're having a business come, come forth in front of the council and speak. So I just hope that the council will take the businesses' concerns into consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter.
Thank you, Mr. Sauter. Do we have any more online?
We do not.
Okay, counsel, anybody? Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, giving me the opportunity to make some comment on that project. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the staff. As you know, last time when we meeting, we said outreach to the public. They did a very good job to outreach the public. And the option two, I very much with the option two in place of option one. And I do some have a concern, you guys are there, you know, that more, I looked at the report on modification one and modification four. First of all, I'd like to, somebody can explain in detail on modification one and modification four. Modification four, I'd like to ask the location of the sign. And modification one, I, I believe that Mr. Tello, he explained very much, I do understand they're doing business here much longer. And I know when there is a, they don't have the left turn, there can be a little bit of effect on the business too. That's whatever we can do. City wants to be, and, and council wants to be, C Street is a very good state. So let's see what we can do, help this business in order to satisfy their business. And there might be some other option, staff or the consultant can think what else we can do. At first, can you, somebody explain to the modification one, how each modification come up?
I can take a crack and, and if, you know, staff or the consultant want to jump in, they can. So again, and I'm just going to show it up on the, on the screen for everyone. So this was the, the western segment as presented back in October, at the October 5th meeting. And so as you can see, there was a two-way left turn, and maybe everybody's looking over here. So there was a two-way left turn lane here and obviously the liquor store here. So what we were asked was to basically see what we could do to provide for that pedestrian crossing here. And then the other comments that, that there were was if there was something that could be done to kind of calm traffic as they start to enter Old Town, I believe this is a 20 mile an hour speed limit zone as you, as you come into Old Town here. So there was a concern about speeding, particularly for the westbound traffic. So in providing the, the crosswalk here with the bulbouts, it provides that pedestrian facility and also, you know, provide some traffic calming measures. And it was also an opportunity to provide some additional landscaping. So in doing the, in the pedestrian crossing, and, and again, reviewing this, and, and I think as you noted, Mayor, a left turn right after the intersection versus here, it seemed to be, you know, probably not, not such a high demand movement. We did not take actual counts, so I appreciate the information from the gentleman tonight. And so there, the, the team basically determined that that was an opportunity to add some additional landscaping there to try to, you know, meet those comments that we received also. But in providing a median two, it's, is also going to calm traffic as well. So that was really kind of the, the genesis for the modification as you're seeing, you know, in the next slide here that, that was shown earlier. Now, one opportunity might be, and we can ask the consultant, I, I think, I'm going to kind of jump ahead here real quick as I'm, so on this slide here where you can see the crosswalk just east of Market, there's a short island on either side that provides that refuge, like I mentioned, for the pedestrians. If we were to go back here, you know, we can have the consultant probably look at doing something like that that hopefully wouldn't inhibit, you know, a refuge space for a vehicle anyway to make a left turn into the liquor store parking lot. So, and, and I think as you, as you may have read in the staff reporting, all these modifications they were proposing tonight are subject, you know, to the council's consideration. So it's kind of a mix and match. So it's kind of a mix and match opportunity for you all. So that's something that, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here as we received this comment tonight, that we could possibly do something like what was done at the refuge island over at Market. So that may be a modification to this modification one.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. So that's me, whatever we proving, proving tonight, we still have the opportunity to mitigate something on that corridor, right?
Yes. This is a modification at this location, so, you know, I don't believe unless the city attorney feels otherwise that we can't modify a modification that's already, you know, proposed. So.
Yeah, that, that will be fine if this, if the staff is able to implement it without a problem with, with that. You just, that would be my only concern is just making sure, I don't know what technical stuff you'll have to do on the backend, but as far as procedural, that would be fine.
Then my next question is, you know, we get a letter from the air quality, oh, they wanna be more greenery, they have something. And when they ask that greenery, it is not just on that space, they want a total greenery on the whole corridor, right? We can consider that greenery somewhere else too instead of that place, right?
So I don't recall the specifics of the letter. My general understanding of the letter was essentially they were simply advocating for a greater amount of aesthetic, you know, greenery. That's really kind of the, the couple of main criteria to the grant that the city received for this, you know, was essentially to provide a multimodal facility with a protected bike lane and then to enhance the aesthetics, you know, of the corridor too. So I think that we, you know, I'm sure option two does not have the level of aesthetic enhancement that they were, you know, envisioning, but I think it, you know, it still meets the criteria for the grant, so.
All right, thank you. The modification four, can you a little bit detail on that?
Yes. Again, from the October 5th meeting, as you may recall, there was, seemed to be consensus from the council. I think it was proposed to put in some kind of an electronic message board where, you know, events could be posted on that to kind of help alert, you know, folks and particularly visitors coming into the city of what activities were, you know, planned in the city. So, so that was something that we heard again at that council meeting, and so we've, we've just kind of reflected tentatively to put it at that southwest corner of Civic and C Street. Now, again, as the consultant noted, you know, there may be other factors that we need to look at once we get into a final design, you know, what utilities and whatnot are there, getting an easement or anything like that. So I wouldn't say that that's a final, you know, location, but it's, it's simply a placeholder, if you will, to kind of reflect what we heard from the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Selling.
Councilman Vanderburg, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious if it's, you know, just about tree counts, so to speak, on between Maple or at Maple and Market Street, there's a dry cleaners there and there's this, you know, that front section of parking lot right by the crosswalk is not used very much. You know, if you could put a tree there in, in there as well as other greenery in the bulbouts, then maybe that would be a way to help satisfy some of the, some of the desires people have for increased greenery while still providing a better access for like the liquor store, you know, if it's just about numbers.
Can you explain that again? I just want to kind of.
Okay, so on Maple Street, right below where the yellow square is, go up, well, right, that's right, just to the left of that.
Right here, Mike?
Oh, okay.
Right there, right. We have low ledge landscaping here for the bike lane.
Right.
Saying this is a real wide open area and the dry cleaner sits back. He said we could maybe do some kind of a couple of trees in this area here.
Exactly.
No driveways, and that would suffice getting rid of the trees down off of Seventh Street.
And also by printing Kings, they have a kind of a lawn there because it used to be a home, but then next to that, there's just actually a blank flower bed that has nothing in it. They could maybe put something in there. And just, and my general thought is not to, you know, drag it on too long, is just looking at the street and picking up areas that are dead space and adding greenery where we can.
Sure, no, appreciate that, council member. I think, you know, as the mayor's kind of pointing out, on the north side there, if it's behind the sidewalk, that would be private property, and so we would need to, you know, essentially get a commitment from the property owner to be able to locate any plantings in there. And obviously we'd want to get, you know, some kind of commitment as far as maintenance too, so.
What about the bulbouts? Are they large enough to accommodate a smaller variety of tree?
So to put some bulbouts in here?
Sorry, no, I meant anywhere along the corridor.
I would say probably unlikely, no. And the other thing too is you don't really want to put a tree unless you can have, you know, the canopy, so to speak, higher, high enough to where it's not gonna inhibit the, you know, the sight distance for vehicles, motorists.
Yeah, I'm just trying to accommodate the businesses, you know.
Right, understood.
So Mr. Selling, could you go back over to the Dry Creek Liquor area?
Yeah.
So my thought would be if we go back to the original design, well, meaning if we just do a protected here and eliminate these three trees to allow his left turn access here, it seems to me that originally when the crosswalk was gonna be here, there's no greenery on this corner or this corner really so much. So by creating that crosswalk, we've now, you've, I've seen in your drawing here, already created quite a bit of greenage here. We could even probably do a tree there or even possibly something here, but definitely probably for sure there. So I mean, I'm kind of leaning to what, piggybacking on what Councilman Vanderburg's saying, I believe it'd be easy to pick up those trees in a couple other areas and leave Mr. Dillon his access and still have the crosswalk at Seventh, which is gonna be a benefit to his business as well, I think, and to the community. That's what, that's what I would suggest. I would suggest the consultant maybe, you know, but that's just my thoughts. Councilman Lozano or Councilman Papinow input on this particular spot?
Not on this spot. I thought the idea of the crosswalk refuge has shown up by the example up further east, you know, is worth consideration. The only question I had actually goes up to eastbound C Street at Civic Drive and the reduction of the turn lane. And I don't know how many car lengths we lose in that, but my concern would be that that would present a problem of left turn traffic backing up into the eastbound lane. And I don't know, it was probably considered, as how many cars we'd lose and is that mitigated by the timing of the intersection lights and so forth?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to staff or the consultant. I think they have the counts. I don't have that level of detail, so I'll defer to them if they can respond to that.
Yeah, I don't think Mike would have.
You probably need to come to a microphone so they can record it, yeah.
If I may, Mayor, while they're coming up, I just want to clarify as the council has discussion, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's a quota of trees that necessarily have to be met.
No.
So I don't want the council to think that we have to exchange trees here for the project to move forward. Obviously, the more trees, the better, but I just want that to be clear so that, you know, the designs get bogged down in tree counting per se.
No, that's accurate.
I'd love, I'd love to see more trees.
No, I would too, and I, no one wants to say you don't need more trees in a public meeting, but I'm just, I'm just letting you know legally speaking, the air management there is there to provide influence and input, but it's not necessarily a regulatory requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Solder.
And we would work with, you know, consultant if we need to get an arborist or something like that to determine where trees, you know, can be located or not, but that would be in the final design phase, so.
All right, just answering that question. So we did, we did do some counts out here. I think what we wanted, would want to do as we get into more of the final design, it would be, or into the more of the preliminary engineering phase, would be to confirm, like you just said, to make sure that the left turn pockets and the traffic signal would operate adequately, looking at the immediate, immediately right now, and then also looking at the design, a designer as well. Because obviously there's, there's a number of factors here that we would have to take into account. If we are gonna block the left turns coming out of the middle driveway, you know, that would change, that would change, and we'd have to model that whole thing in terms of a traffic analysis. So that still needs to be looked at. We haven't gone into a lot of detail at this point. This is more sort of conceptual, but that is something that we would want to, want to consider as well.
Thank you.
So since we're on this particular page, this is the one I honestly had a lot, most concerned with. And so this afternoon, I actually went out and kind of drove it, kind of trying to understand, like, you know, I mean, a lot of us have frequented this area a lot, and I frequent it regularly. As it was talked about in the original thing, this driveway is the most used out of all the three of these driveways. It's more used in the intersection, it's more used in the one by Denny's, it's this one. The problem is, is not so much what you can see here. So what you've done here by doing this is you've basically just restricted the left turn coming out of here. So, you know, you can drive and you can go in, but if you're coming out of this, you can't turn and you can't go back up this way. You can only go right, or you have to use this intersection. Seems pretty simple, but here's the problems. What you don't see off screen is that this, the design of this drive-through here was very poor, in my opinion, as is the Taco Bell. When you come out of the drive-through at Taco, at Carl's Jr., you cannot turn right and just loop out right here because this little driveway here is an inlet only. You have to go up and the driveway actually angles at a 45 degree angle this way, so you actually have to come and stop, and then you're not even pointing in the right direction to hook. And when you do hook and come back this way, you're actually crossing across into opposite traffic and coming down. This is why people don't do that. They come out of the drive-through, the drive-through kind of hooks this way, people come out of the drive-through and they shoot over and they come out and they go this way. That's what the habit of most people do. The second thing is by pushing these people onto this intersection, this intersection here with this little pork chop thing that Mr. Sauter mentioned, this whole thing here is really a disaster. I wish we had a picture of it, but, and this backs up in here, and you have people trying to come out of Taco Bell, people trying to come out of this weird little outlet, and then what happens is people back up here, and now you have an unprotected intersection left turn here. So to force more people out into here to deal with this and then have to come into an intersection which is unprotected left turn to go that way, I think you're actually, it's, you're creating more of a problem. And I, I just, I have a big problem with that. I think originally when we had that, I know this, this suicide lane, as I call it, you know, seems like it's, it's a conflict because you have people wanting to come in here and go to the bank and, but it's been that way for 30 years. I don't know that there's a whole lot of accidents there. I don't, you know, of course have those numbers, but I'm just telling you that Carl's Jr. is one of those businesses where people come off the freeway and they come down and hit Carl's Jr. So if you're curious about how many people are gonna be coming from this direction to use Carl's Jr. and then want to go back that direction, the answer is probably a lot. And to restrict those people from, from, you know, coming out of the drive-through and having to deal with this whole, and this is of course private property, but this whole thing right here, if any of you are familiar with that little thing out of, it's, it's a mess. People come in the wrong way sometimes and to filter, to push people into that, into that spot and into a parking lot that we really have no control over how that's, how it's arranged, I just fear that's gonna be a big, we're gonna create a big mess there. So I don't know. And I don't know what the answer is. You know, it's, it's a tricky spot, it really is, but.
I think as, as Brian noted, and appreciate all that, Mayor, that what we would do in the final design phase is they will get the counts, they will, you know, get the turning movements and, and see what can be done. And if we cannot put in as proposed on this alternative, and it's, and it remains to be a two-way left turn lane or suicide lane, as you say, we don't like that term.
I know, sorry.
Traffic engineering world, but two-way left turn lane, then, then that may be the case. The other thing that I would point out too, and again, everybody, you know, traffic is like water, there's a saying, traffic's like water, it's gonna take the path of least resistance. And so what some of the folks may well, oops, sorry, wrong button. So what some of the folks may well do is go down to this Denny's and, and they can make that left back out kind of thing, rather than waiting for a light and, you know, whatever congestion may be occurring back in here, so.
I think the problem with that is if you have people, so if I'm at Save Mart, I'm gonna exit this here. Even when I come out of Ace Hardware, I typically like to just cut through and go off this too. I don't even use this because this intersection, it backs up here, I'm telling you, it's, it's not a, it's not a popular intersection. I think for people to have to now go all the way over here, you're now gonna be having people driving through, you know, Save Mart parking lot right here with their speed bumps and there's people coming in and out of the store or zooming through here, I think you're gonna create more danger by forcing people to all be driving through the parking lot because people are gonna probably trying to, you know, speed through there to get over by Denny's. I just feel like, I'm telling you, I mean, anybody's lived in Galt a long time, this middle drive-through, this right here is the highest access point. I mean, if you were to do traffic studies, I would bet you that they're gonna be significantly higher than the other two areas. That's just my opinion from someone who's lived here, you know, my entire life. I don't know. Anybody else have thoughts on this? I know Mr. Papinow had some concern with the turn lane, but, I mean, the original design of this option two, I think, you know, I think was fabulous, and I know you guys have had to do some couple alterations, but I was ready to give my stamp of approval full well on option two, but now we have these two modifications at this spot and the other, now I have concerns. And I don't want to, this is a big deal, so. Anyone else want to weigh in on this particular spot?
I agree with you what you're saying about that Taco Bell and Carl's Jr., that little pork chop, as you called it, that's a, it's tough to navigate with vehicles. I've seen multiple people turn, just cheat, turn, go the wrong direction on, you know, where they're not supposed to just because it's difficult to navigate. A lot of people cross lanes in that parking lot or on the opposite side of the road because they're trying to go wide to come into Taco Bell or vice versa. And I agree, I shop at that grocery store a lot, the center, I'd say all three access points are used a lot. That's really gonna affect traffic. There's a, there's a, I would guess, you know, 20% of the traffic are gonna have to decide a new way to go. When I leave that grocery store, I choose that lane or that exit every time because it's the most convenient for me. And I, that's just me, I realize that, but you know, the traffic numbers will tell the truth, right? So in this, and we're still working out the final design, we're just bringing up the points, we'll do, review more numbers and make a better decision with more information, correct? And so we go.
Yeah, just to remind the council again, this is kind of a mix and match opportunity for you. So if, you know, if option four, you elect not to move forward with the modification proposed there, it can remain as it was, so. Or we can do the, the final traffic analysis and, and take it from there.
Also too, on the option four, I, was my understanding that the little diagonal entry board that was gonna be messaging board was gonna be on the city hall side on the grass, not on the, what would be the bank property? So that was kind of a surprise to me, is that, was that not the case, or?
So again, it was just a placeholder shown. I think, you know, when, when we looked at it, it looked like that southwest corner might have a greater, you know, visibility factor. And the other thing we were a little concerned about is kind of competing with the Tom Memorial and City Hall itself. So we were just, like I said, placeholder, just showing it on that southwest corner, but it's not, you know, carved in stone kind of thing, so.
Does anybody have any questions about the second modification, which was the one by the Farmers Insurance? I like the way the design, the modification, to me, by moving the crosswalk, I think is the better fit. I don't see any problems restricting any access there. So for me, I, I think that modification is fine, in my opinion, but I don't know if anybody else has concerns with it. You know, just note for the public, you know, a lot of us did a lot of, not only did we have this community input, which the city did a very good job, but I know myself and some other council members, you know, visited a lot of these businesses firsthand. We didn't visit Mr. Dillon in the liquor store because at the time, there was no, nothing seemed to be affecting his turn access, and so I didn't feel it was necessary. But we did visit all the ones that felt there might be, would be some concern, and we talked with almost every business we possibly could face to face. And I was very confident at that point that we had an agreement for most of them that the option number two was a good design and there was gonna be no, no pushback on it at all. So that's all I want to ensure, I think all of us want that, so. So could we, I mean, is it a time we can suggest not moving forward with some of the modifications and being okay with others or coming back with more info on what could be done with data or what, what's our options here?
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to the attorney if I get it wrong to correct me. Essentially, as I understand it, your, your purview is to, you know, yea or nay on each one of the four options or some modification there too, like we talked about with number one, to just build a refuge island and not the extended median with the trees. So that would be my understanding of it, and.
Yeah, that's, that sounds all fine. And again, I'll just leave it up to the technical experts to say whether or not, if they make any of those modifications, that you're prepared to do that, because obviously I don't know what analysis you may need to do, but you, I'm sure you'll speak up if that's necessary. But. I'm sure you'll speak up if that's necessary, but procedurally, that's fine.
Well, what I would suggest, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor, you have something to say.
You know, Mr. Selling, my statement is, or I like to be, this agenda item, I will go for this agenda item, but I just want to make sure staff and consultant well consider their top priority, whatever concern we heard tonight.
Absolutely.
So what I was going to suggest is, I would like to see modification one, go back to, well, actually not go back to the original sign, but, but have the modification with the crosswalk at Seventh and C, but with the, just the protection without the, without the trees and the median blocking Mr. Dillon's business. And then on option number two, Maple Street, I don't have any suggestions, I'm fine with the modifications there. And then modification three, I, I really like the original option two design, but if, you know, I would be also open to doing some traffic studies to see about that, but I definitely do not want to block the turn out of there, so I don't really know what to do on that one. Does anybody have any thoughts on those? Make any alternate ideas?
I concur with your assessment, I think, you know, the slight modification at the liquor store is good, I, I have to, if I were to vote right now, I'd want to see the original, not the original, but, design number two at City Hall to stay the way it was without the multiple turn lanes. I have driving there a lot, I don't like the two turn lanes, I like the way the original sign two modification and then where we had it at Market Street, I was, I was good with the modifications on that. That's basically what you were saying, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So I mean, this is a presentation, not an action item, so we're, you're looking kind of for direction on this, right?
No, we were looking for an action on this.
Okay, okay.
Does that make, does that make sense?
So then, could I propose a motion with these, well, I would like to propose a motion that we do the modification of the crosswalk installation at Seventh and C, but only with the protections and not the full median with the trees as to not block the liquor store access. Option modification number two, leave as it is, leave this modification as is suggested. And then with the third modification, I would like to go back to the original option two drawing, as it was presented in option two at the public outreach and everything, and then with option, with the modification four, I'm fine with whatever ends up happening with that, whatever corner is deemed the most usable for the billboard sign. That's what I'm, that's what I, that's the motion that I'm suggesting. Does, is that clear enough for anybody, or we need to clarify details?
I was just going to ask, make sure that was clear enough for you, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to read it back to us, just so we make sure?
Yeah, so I, my, my notes are, modification one is to provide the median refuge for the pedestrian crossing and, and maintain the left-in access to the liquor store. Modification two, as proposed, no change. Modification three, to go back to the pre-modification alternative for option two, i.e. the two-way left turn lane for full left-in, left-out access to both the Galt Market, or Galt Plaza, I'm sorry, on the north side and the Bank of America Starbucks on the south side. And then modification four, to include a changeable message sign or, or billboard type sign, electronic billboard at either of the southeast or southwest corners, whichever is deemed most advantageous. I have a quick second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu, can I have a roll call, please?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, in modification one, where it talks about access into, and I'll just, Dry Creek Liquor, there's a proposal in here to, to restripe half of the parking lot.
Good point.
My question is this, with this motion, do we still do that? And I don't know that it's appropriate.
No.
No, we would not.
And then also, there was, Mr. Dillon talked about access to angled parking, and I apologize, my computer went down right in the middle of this project and all my notes went away. He talked about the off-street parking request, and so is there a way we can get back to, I know that's not part of, of what we're doing here in terms of the modifications, but is there a way that we can get, get back to him on, you know, some reasoning why that's not appropriate?
Yeah, we can check with, I, I'm not sure what role Public Works played in that, I, I heard him comment that it was the Community Development Department, but we can definitely circle up with them.
I would like that to be looked at as well.
And confirm.
The, yeah, and I, and I have a feeling, because I had Google, the reason my computer went down is Google Maps was up, I think it's because there are, is angled parking on the opposite, on the east side of the street, down by Stratton's, and it literally comes up to about where that other angled parking would happen or would, is being requested across the street, and so that may, in, in that case, that may narrow that road too much, having angled parking on both sides, but I'd like to know if that's, if that is it, or if there's some other reason.
Or perhaps it, it could be a little bit of an S to the street with striping, I don't believe there's any striping to indicate, you know, not that it's needed right now, but I, I see your point about the two diagonal parkings would encroach on each other in space of vehicles coming in different directions at that point would make it difficult.
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Lozano, what he, what he asked, and that, so that, to be clear, the parking, the restriping of the parking lot in the liquor store is not part of this motion, and what he suggested to have looked at would be, of course, not part of this motion, but I would concur to have that looked at, the diagonal on the street as well.
Correct, the restriping of the parking lot, the liquor store is not included.
Does that answer your questions, Rich?
It does, and so I would just say that, that the resolution reflect that, those changes as well. And that's all, I, I had a couple of other issues, but they were already asked.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second, have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion approved five zero. All right, thank you for the presentation, Brian, thank you for the presentation, sir, appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Dillon, for coming and speaking, we always want to hear from our citizens and especially on important matters like this, thank you. Sort through my paperwork real quick here. All right, moving on to item two, for our regular calendar, subject is the Consumna Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Workshop. Mr. Selling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening again, fellow council members. So as you likely recall, I provided a couple of presentations recently on the groundwater management efforts that we've been working on, specifically covering the governance structure and the efforts to, to fund, fund this. So tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the actual plan to ensure the sustainability of our groundwater basin, and that's essentially the, our blueprint for the next 20 years. So some background, and as you may recall from prior presentations, that the state passed a Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA as we refer to it, in 2014, and the key requirements of SIGMA are that all overdrafted basins, and there's really two, two levels, a extreme and then a medium priority, they must develop a groundwater sustainability plan, or what we call a GSP. There can be a lot of acronyms in this, I think I've mentioned on the past, but bear with me, I'll try to explain them. So our GSP or plan is due by January 31st of next year, so not quite two months from now. And then, as I touched on, the 20 years, we have 20 years to achieve sustainability, and, and basically the state breaks it down into five-year increments, so they want to see, you know, incremental progress towards sustainability of the, of the basin. And, and they obviously don't want to manage it themselves, they prefer that local control be, be responsible to achieve that sustainability. But they can take it over if, if we essentially misstep, so to speak, so. So again, for the city, we became a GSA, or Groundwater Sustainability Agency, in 2017, and we have jurisdiction over the portion of the basin that underlies the city limits. For approximately the past four years, the city has been working with six other GSAs under a couple of framework agreements, a cost-sharing agreement, and then most recently, we processed and, and the council approved a joint powers authority agreement and then an initial funding and revenue agreement, and those are noted on the slide, and all approved by council. So you've seen this map before, but, you know, again, I want to just reiterate for anybody that may be new, just becoming familiar with this or hearing about it, this map shows the basin, the Consumna Sub Basin, and the different, seven different GSAs are shown as color-coded, and the city of Galt is kind of in the lower left here in pink, so, anyway, that's, that's the map that kind of just gives everybody a basis for, for what we're talking about when we talk about the groundwater basin. So this, let's see, yeah, so at a glance, I guess, the, some of the key information as to why the state is requiring this sustainability plan, essentially through the work that we've been doing over those last four years with our group and our consultant, who's done extensive data gathering and also modeling for the basin, the average annual total amount of water extracted from the basin is about 110,000 acre-feet per year, and maybe just a quick visual, maybe for folks, that, that, that seems like, what, what does that mean? That means if you took an acre of land and you had one foot deep of water on that land, that's one acre foot, so you're talking about 110,000, and that's just a, a big measurement for, for how water is measured. So of that amount, the city, we're a very small player in this, so to speak, we only take about 4,500 acre-feet of that 110,000 out on an average annual basis. The amount of water that's flowing into the basin largely occurs from percolation, from rainfall, and then other surface waters as it goes down through the strata into the, the aquifer, and that is about 100,000 acre-feet a year, so that's that 10,000 plus or minus, we're saying, from the modeling, about 10,600 acre-feet per year on average is how much more is being taken out than what's flowing in. The consultant has further identified a goal of 20,000 acre-feet per year that's needed to mitigate that overdraft amount, and, and the difference there is that about 8,400 acre-feet, that's recommended as basically, you know, a contingency, provide some, you know, cushion if you will, in case one or more of the projects that we have planned has a lower than expected yield or benefit to, to achieving the sustainability, or if there's any delays in implementing the projects. And then as I reflected here, and you can likely determine from the figures shown, the city share is quite small, about 4%, and I want to stress again, though, that, you know, while we're a small player, the state looks at each basin as a whole, and so it's key that we work together with the other GSAs and coordinate our efforts. So some of the key elements of the plan, and as I touched on in past presentations, I just wanted to get into some of the details, because I really kind of focused more in the past on, on the funding and, and the governance structure, but as far as the, the details of the plan, it includes a broad description of the basin, and that means it's geology, it's hydrogeology, and, and there's also an interconnectedness to both what's called the, the eastern San Joaquin basin to the south and the, the South American sub-basin to the north of us. So all three of those sub-basins are kind of interconnected, and if you can imagine, water flows back and forth between them, so, and, and that's a real key to understanding how water moves in and out of our basin. So some of the other aspects that are included in, in that description and analysis is the various land uses, the types of crops that are on, you know, various parcels of land, and then developing water budgets from that. Additionally, we want to look at, you know, what's, what's occurred historically as far as conditions, and that includes weather, you know, water use, and then compare that with current conditions to gain an understanding of how it compares. So one of the key efforts to utilizing all this information in coordinating this effort is, is looking at the data from the existing wells, because there's two wells we've basically determined that we need to put two additional monitoring wells in some places where we've got data gaps. So that's, that's, that's helped to determine that, and that's key too for the state, because they want to see that we've, don't have any data gaps, if you will, so. And then I've touched on before, there's six criteria really that the state, under SIGMA, has asked us to, to look at, and those are, those are noted on the, on the slide above. You know, there's one that I want to point out really that we don't have to deal with here fortunately, and that's the seawater intrusion. Our Consumna sub-basin is not close enough to the San Joaquin Delta or anything to be potentially affected by the seawater. Further south at the eastern San Joaquin, they do have to deal with that. And then the other thing that kind of has, you know, some folks may have heard over the last few years, particularly as you go down in the San Joaquin Valley further south, there's been a lot of subsidence, essentially the land consolidating because enough groundwater's been pumped out, and so those poor spaces, if you will, where the water is, is in between the strata, have been pulled dry, and so the ground starts to consolidate or compress, and so that we, they've seen some pretty significant land subsidence down there. We're very fortunate with the soil types that we have and, and with the, the hydrogeology of our basin that there's essentially no subsidence in our basin, so, good news there. So the next major element of the plan is how we collectively intend to reverse the trend of more water being extracted than entering. The seven GSAs have identified several projects and management actions or conservation actions, if you will, to, to do that, and so the consultant has looked at those management actions and those projects to determine how much of a benefit they're going to have to offsetting that overdraft, get us back to what we, you know, what the state and us consider sustainable. Each of these is described in the plan, including how they will work, the amount of recharge or conservation each is anticipated to achieve, the implementation timeframe, and estimated cost of them. Obviously, some projects are going to take a few years to go through the process of planning, some of them are going to require agreements with landowners and whatnot, so those kinds of things take some time, and then also some of them too will, will need to secure funding, they, we don't have full funding on them. We're also hoping to pursue some grants for some of them, so, so that may take some time. So, for the city's part, one of the projects, I guess I just want to highlight this for the city itself, is we have our wastewater treatment plant, and after we treat the, the wastewater that comes through the plant, it's discharged down into the gulch and essentially works its way out to the, to the Pacific Ocean. So we would want to take some of that effluent, that discharge water and use it, and the state allows this, to irrigate adjoining crop lands, and so that water could essentially save the water that's being pumped to irrigate those lands, and so we can get credit for that. So that's one of the projects that we're proposing. We think that that may yield somewhere in the 500 to 700 acre-feet per year range toward achieving that, mitigating that overdraft. Some of the other projects include capturing additional water in wet years that come down the Consumna River, for example, and dispersing it onto properties that the soils allow more percolation to occur, and so we can get some credit that way too. So anyway, lastly, I'll touch on that the plan addresses the estimated costs and funding for all of these projects and actions to achieve sustainability. Obviously, something like this is going to require a great deal of outreach, and so I wanted to kind of highlight the outreach efforts that have taken place and will, and some of which will continue to, to occur. So first and foremost, we've had a working group that's been meeting, again, these are representatives from the seven GSAs, there's several subcommittees that we've had too, like I touched on, governance and funding kind of subcommittees, so all of those have been publicly noticed meetings, and there's a website that's shown on the slide there, and that's where you can find all the information, there's plenty of resources there that talks about various aspects of what's going on, you can get the plan there, so there's a lot of. So there's a lot of resources there for folks. And so that's been a key information hub for us, so, and, and it'll continue to be, so you can watch that website and, and subscribe to it, and you'll get notifications and whatnot, too, so. And then earlier in this past summer, before the draft plan was released for public comment, there were three public workshops that were held, and then the draft plan was released in August. We had a 60-day comment period for that, which closed in, I think it was mid to late October. And so the consultant and the, the GSAs have been working on responding to those comments. We got about, I think it was 148 comments from really 20, 20 commenters. And I mean, they ran the gamut from just corrections to inquiries about, you know, Sigma and why the state is doing this, concerns about fees and funding, how that's going to work. One of the concerns from the Ag side was the potential is there to do some land fouling on a voluntary basis, and from that, because those farmers or, or, you know, pasture land folks are not using groundwater, not pumping groundwater, if, if we start to see, you know, a, I guess, a positive, significant positive increase from that, that, that some water could be sold off to other entities. But that's something that, you know, we got a lot of comments about, don't sell any water kind of thing, so. So that was a, a big part of it, things like climate change, and there were some other things, too, about the tribal and disadvantaged communities. So we got kind of a, a broad spectrum of comments on the plan. So as far as next steps go, I, as I just touched on, the consultant and, and the team have been busy processing those comments and finalizing the GSP, the sustainability plan. I did just get a, an email yesterday that they're very close, and we expect to have it done probably in the next day or two, so. They were hoping for December 6th, but we're a little bit behind on that, but should be finalized. For the city of Galt, I'm proposing to bring the, the final GSP back here to council at the next meeting on December 21st for the council's consideration to approve it. Again, we've got to have it submitted by January 31st, and just with our timing, this is really kind of our, our one main opportunity to get it done in time to be submitted, so. All of the other GSAs are, are doing the same here in the next few weeks, so. And then, you know, and then we'll be implementing the plan once it's submitted, and during that time, the state will be reviewing it, giving us any feedback, any changes that we need to make kind of thing, but we'll be implementing the plan, starting those efforts on those projects and management actions. We've already had the first board meeting, and so that, the board will be meeting likely monthly to kind of get the process up and running, so that's coming. And then we've got to do our, our ongoing monitoring and reporting back to the state, so that's one of the steps. And then the first annual report, it's kind of odd, but it's due in April of next year, so the consultant's already started on that annual report, getting that monitoring data and starting to put the report together. So that's, that's coming up, and that'll go before that, before our CGA board, the Casunas Groundwater Authority Board. And then, as I touched on earlier, we did our initial year funding plan, so that's essentially good through June, and so one of the tasks of the CGA board and staff will be to develop a long-term funding plan. And, and again, each, each entity, the city being one of seven, we are responsible for our own portion, how we're going to fund it. So for the city, and you're going to hear in the next item, that we are going to be building the cost for the city's share into our water rate study. So anyway, you'll hear a little bit more about that in the next item. And so with that, Mr. Mayor and Council completes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions, and Mr. Clarkson's in the audience as well, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Selling. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment. If you would like to raise your hand on Zoom or on the phone, you may do so. Do we have any comment in the chambers, Tina?
No, we do not.
Okay, so comment is, public comment period is open right now. Do we have any comments or questions from the council for Mr. Selling? No? Okay. I'm going to keep the public comment open for one minute to allow people to call or Again, if you have questions, if you're watching online or on Zoom, you can raise your hand on Zoom, or you can use the number, phone number listed on the online agenda to call in by phone and comment. Do we have any hands raised or any phone comments?
We do not.
Okay, I will now close the public comment. And thank you, Mr. Selling. Moving on to our next item, continuing with the water theme, is going to be water and wastewater rate development workshop from Mr. Selling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce Mr. Clarkson, and he's going to take it from here. Did you want, you want me to do the slides or you want to do it?
You can do the slides.
Okay, just prompting for next slide.
Mayor, City Council, boy, it's good to be back home, you know, be here and, and in, in front of everybody, but we've got to talk about rates and the black box that comes with them. We're going to have a presentation tonight. Boy, this is, my mom tried to gag me for years, and if only she knew it was starting to work. So, so we have, as, as Mr. Selling said, we have some costs coming up, we have to look at the health of our utility system. We usually do it about every five years. We kind of slowed down because of the COVID that was out here. But what you're going to see in a presentation today, if you kind of look at it like a college syllabus, a lot of it's going to be terms that you've never heard of before, a lot of it, you haven't been stepped through it, you've, you've probably been on a consumer end of it, when you see your rates go up and go, what the heck are these guys doing again? What we're going to do with this body is, over the next six months, we're going to take you step by step through that process, so you're going to be amateur rate developers by the time we're done. And so when a, when a consumer comes to you, you're going to be able to answer a lot of questions of how we develop things, how we do cost of service, the financial plan, and, and how the regulation works with, with Prop 218. And that really comes down to everything that we have in utilities was paid by the rate payers or developers to develop it. We have over $200 million of assets out there that we maintain, that we operate, that's heavily regulated, this is both water and wastewater. Our operators are heavily regulated, all the equipment we buy, all of the, the chemicals we buy, the lab stuff, all heavily regulated. So, so what we do out there are things that we have to do by EPA, state, or county standards, and, and we maintain that over the years. And before I get too far, talk with the city manager, come on out and visit the utilities. Really, we have some really good tours that goes on out there, and you can actually see what's going on and understand where all this cost come from. Our wastewater treatment plan itself to replace it today is over $100 million. We have to maintain it. We have to keep it maintained at a certain level because of regulations, and also because to reduce cost to the rate payers who are, who are paying for the maintenance of this and, and, and keeping it up at the standard. Well, with this, we get regulated on how we can collect revenues, how we do cost of service studies, how we do certain things. It has to be defensible in court, has to meet Prop 218 guidelines, there's a whole, there, there's so much behind it, you know, that the Prop 218, I think, was adopted in the late 1990s, and boy, they added a lot of stuff to it since. So, we're going to go through the presentation real quick. If you have any questions, don't, don't feel that you're going to get all the answers tonight, because it, it's going to really take time. This, if we were going to go through all of this, it would take three hours to do this. We're just going to give you a brief overview, knowing that we're going to be back here talking to you and taking you through the steps as we go through, as we go through this process. And as you heard, I had, didn't say anything about, about rate increases. This is rate development, this is seeing where we're at, and we have to see where we're at before, before we start making decisions down the road. So it's, it's a step-by-step process and, on this. So want to introduce Habib Isaac with, who's our consultant, who's been with us for a few rate cases, and, and he'll, he'll do the presentation right now.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and city constituents. Habib Isaac with IB Consulting. I'm just going to go through a presentation, talk to you about basically rates 101 of what we have to go through with rate design, and would you mind if I take control of it?
So a little bit background myself, I've been in public finance for 18 years. I've been focused solely on utility rates for probably like the last 11 years, maybe 12 years now. My colleague, my business partner, Andrea, she was a state auditor with the city of Tennessee, and then we've been working in TAM together for about 10 years and, and also solely focus on utility rates. So all we do in our business is water-related services, primarily financial planning, rate development. One thing that Mark mentioned was, you guys do this once every round, every five years. You can't really do it more than five years based on state statutes and Prop 218. The most you go out for on a rate schedule to your property owners is five years is the most. So Prop 218 always builds in the fact that you have to come back and revisit this on a periodic basis and send out notices to your customers to keep them aware of your enterprises. Also, with the, in terms of Galt, we did prepare the last cost of service studies. We did make some adjustments for water as well as wastewater in terms of rate design. We also assisted with the capacity fees and being able to have the funding for your expansion of your wastewater plant. We are independent, so we do review this, each utility, because they are, should be self-funding business enterprises. They are not part of the general fund, they cannot rely on property tax revenue, rates must fully fund these services. And because of that, that's why there's a lot of regulations, a lot of statutes in, in Prop 218 and guidelines that we have to follow to ensure that what we, what you're charging is based on the cost incurred, and because you're a government agency, it's not where you're making a profit of any kind. But costs also include reserves to make sure that you're in a healthy position. And then one thing to point out, the city is at the end of its notice rates, and every utility must hold a public hearing to adopt new rate schedule. And then one last thing, when you do adopt rates, you should have a strong administrative record, and thus where we come in, where we provide administrative record, so we're the ones that are taking that liability, that if we're incorrect, we're the ones that you can fall back on, just like your, your CPA that does your CAFR, things of that sort. When we look at the background in the water, the last study was done in 2016. The rate structure was adjusted to move from flat rates to meter rates. Back then, you're going through your meter replacement program, but you still had non-meter customers. So we had this mix of meter customers and non-metered, and based on some of the legislation of the state, and the water code, it states that all customers must be metered by, I believe it was 2025, and if you are metered, you must be charged based on the usage through that meter. So over time, this is why you took over the project to change non, convert non-meter to metered. Now, what's unique with this next study is that we're going to have a good amount of data of, with all customers metered, so we can look at what is the usage trend, the actual usage trends of customers, instead of assuming that non-metered is using somewhat, somewhat the same or based on lot size. So that's going to be important. Another thing that we did was your fixed cost recovery, so whenever we structure rates, you have a certain amount that is coming from just a monthly fixed charge based on the size of the meter, that's constant stable revenue, and then you have a certain amount of your, of the revenue needed coming from the amount of water that customers use. And in that breakup between how much is fixed and how much is based on usage, 60% of your cost recovery was on the fixed charge, and 40% was on variable. So we ticked that up compared to where it was before, and it provides some stronger revenue sufficiency and stability. And keep in mind, with utilities, almost 80% of cost because of infrastructure is fixed cost, that isn't a function of the amount of water used. And we always recommend a full cost of service study every five years. Some agencies do it every two years, every three years, but during that time period, if they do an update, you still use the same cost of service analysis that was done a year or two years ago, but once you get to about four years, five years, that data gets kind of stale, and with all the conditions of the state and droughts and state legislation and mandatory conservation, voluntary conservation, the usage patterns change over time, and then we always want to make sure that we have your rates reflect that actual usage characteristics of your customers. And as I mentioned, you're going to have all your, all your meters, all your customer now metered, so that's going to give us really sound data. On the wastewater side, that was a one year later, we're doing that concurrently, but with wastewater, there's also stable revolving fund loans that you're getting. With wastewater, we incorporated the second SRF loan into that last rate study, and so you had an SRF loan, number one, and number two, that became part of the fixed charge. And then we also restructured non-residential groupings where it was a bunch of different, very specific customer types, and instead of doing that, where you're in an area that has potential development, we changed it to grouping them to a low strength, medium strength, high strength, and then that also allowed your staff to identify whatever project or developments coming online, review it, and then inform them where they land in terms of low, medium, high versus, you know, maybe it's a brewery, we're like, well, we don't have breweries, we have a restaurant, but we don't have breweries, I don't know where you land. But now it makes it a little bit easier for them to identify where they, where they should fall. And then same thing, every five years, we should incorporate that. And now with, with meter customers, we then are going to have a better information of how much influence they, they produce. Also, the city had implemented $26.8 million improvements to comply with those treatment requirements, and that would be incorporated into our analysis. So with the cost of service study goals, our main objectives is, one, determine, update your long-term financial plan. So we not only look at the short-term needs, which is probably more detailed, but we also look out in the horizon 20 years, 30 years, just in case there's some big capital project coming online, and then also to slowly build up your reserves to what is best management practices for enterprise funds. You know, there should be a certain amount for operating reserve, a certain amount for capital reserve, rate civilization, if there's going to be some improvements needed for the JSA needs, we go through that. And then we develop an updated cost of service analysis where that is the key to show there is a nexus connected to the rates you're going to charge your customers, that then flows all the way back to your budget and the costs actually incurred. When we do that, we then have to look at what is the best approach or the best rate structure to utilize. So for example, if we do cost service analysis and we see that residential based on usage and peaking characteristics, they need to recover, say, 20% of the total revenue requirement. How we recover that from single-family, whether it's uniform, or we tier it, or we do budget-based rates, it's, this rate structure is still going to generate 20% of the revenue. It doesn't change based on what rate structure we select. What changes, what, what drives the rate structure is what's the most equitable way to recover that cost from that specific customer class. So this is where we have flexibility, that single-family, we might tier it, but then commercial, we may just keep it uniform, but the amount that they're supposed to recover on a customer class level stays constant. So if commercial needs to recover a million, if we tier or not tier it, it's still going to, they're still going to recover a million dollars. And then we prepare a full report for the water and wastewater studies, and then we're going to walk you through our- And then we're going to walk you through our approach as well as what is the health of each each utility? Where are you looking now with current rates? Where do we recommend that you end? And then how do we get how do we get there through two to three viable options? So these are the the process we'll be taking. Today is the rates one on one. We'll come back to you to discuss the financial plan and how you're looking for each utility. Once you understand where you need to be and what metrics we're using for the financial health of the utilities, we then come back with the rates at a separate session. So then if you decide or you're honing in on certain rates or you want the rates to change a little bit, whether it be how much is charged on the fixed side or variable, whatever leverage you decide to change, we then could quote backing and connect it back to the financial plan. If you want this to be lower, then that means we're losing something on the on the financial health side. And then we could toggle between those to show what's the give and take. And then we'll provide our recommendations from doing this and being experts in the field of what is a couple best approaches. I'm saying a couple or I'm saying viable because there's many ways pathways to get to the same end result. One could be fix something right away. For example, there might be a need to increase rates in 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 the earlier, the first year because of debt covenants or bond coverage. Whereas if you're looking at getting to a certain level of reserves, we take a very measured approach over the five years to reach that level without causing rate shock to your customers. And through all this, we'll do presentations to not just the council, but also to the community through workshops. Right now, this is our rates one on one, so I can go through some of the things that we have to be aware of and keep in the front of our minds when we're going through rates. The first thing and what's on the forefront is going to be Prop 218. I'll take each one of these provisions separately. So the first one is an agency cannot collect revenue beyond what is necessary to provide service. This is fairly straightforward, but this is as as one example is you can't just use you can't use rates as penalties when there isn't a cost related to that. So you have to make sure that that is connected to your budget and your cost. Revenue derived by the charge should not be used for any other purpose other than for which that charge was imposed. This is pretty important with cities. With special districts that only provide water, it's pretty straightforward. Their budget is for water. But with cities, this is where you have to be careful where your cost allocation plan doesn't include certain costs that shouldn't be in there, like for police or for fire. Those are services that are unrelated to water. Last one, the amount with the fee may not exceed the proportional cost of service for the parcel. This is where our cost of service analysis comes in, where we show the way we're going to allocate cost to customers is going to be based on the usage patterns and the trends that they're showing and the demand that they put on the system based on how much water they use and how much influent they generate. So this is where that cost of service is very important to show that nexus. And then no charge may be imposed for a service unless the service is actually used or merely available to the owner or property. With that, you need to make sure that, again, you're not charging for things that are not related to the water fund. Some agencies, for example, they got in trouble where they have a wish list of capital projects and then those never came to fruition. So then you're really overcharging your customers for a service that was never provided. And then this is just more procedurally. You need to send out a notice to your customers of the proposed rates forty five days before the public hearing. So even we get things done really quick, you still have almost two months of just waiting before you can have a public hearing to take action on the item. And then we also recommend either before the notices go out or after to have a workshop with the community. Approach of valuing rate options. We first look at existing rates, you know, coming back. How how do the rates work out? Is there things that because we did make some changes, what's working, what's not working? And then we also want to know what's the rate objectives? What should we try to achieve with the new rates? Example, that would be funding for the GSP. That's something that we can incorporate into this analysis to make sure that we're hitting some other objectives and goals of the city. Rate alternatives, there's many ways to recover revenue from your customers. Right now, you have tiered tiered rates to residential. And the question would be, you know, should they be go back to uniform? Should we keep the tiers? Should we do budget based rates? I wouldn't say you're a candidate for budget based rates. That's when you analyze what is the needs of every specific parcel on a parcel by parcel basis and give them budgets based on their outdoor irrigation needs. That's really probably not necessary in this case, but that is something we could evaluate. But one thing that's going to probably be important that is for this particular case would be how much should we recover from the fixed variable? Between fixed and variable. As I mentioned before, we set at sixty percent. Most likely, when we do our analysis, we're going to find it's not sixty percent anymore. Because water use of trends changes and then you added meters and new connections, it's going to be a little bit different. We just worked with the agency where we set it at thirty percent and now it's down to twenty five percent. But a lot of that has to do with COVID. We've seen usage increase substantially for residential from people staying at home and not having to go to work. They're more in their area. So then the usage in in residential has increased and has outpaced any type of loss from commercial during those shutdown periods. So one thing with that is we can't assume twenty twenty one is the new normal. We're going to have to take a little bit of a haircut off of that usage trend because now things are going a little bit more back to normal. We've noticed that twenty twenty is fairly good to be somewhere within that range a little bit more because twenty twenty did was impacted by COVID, but only for like the last quarter of the fiscal year. So then that could be something that we we use as a baseline because it's thought that first shutdown was like in March of of twenty twenty. Here are your current rates. I won't go through each one of them specifically, but this is just a snapshot. Usage rate residential ninety seven, non residential ninety seven, irrigation is one fifteen. And you charge for each hundred cubic feet and that's seven hundred forty eight gallons. And I apologize, last time we did evaluate tiered rates and then we end up going with rate, uniform rates per customer class. And then with your wastewater, we broke it out a little bit just so you could see the SRF loans for a single family, multifamily. The cost was twenty five ninety one, those are the two loans combined. And then the rest of the cost recovery is also on a flat charge of forty eight. So total bill is roughly seventy three dollars on a monthly basis. And then for non residential, you'll see their fixed charge for low, medium, high. On that one, there was a lot of discussion last time where the the city staff felt it was more equitable to allocate their share of the SRF loan to their on their variable side instead of on the fixed side because the commercial uses, they use water so differently and the influence generated is so vastly different between a restaurant and say a retail store that they felt was more equitable to have it spread based on the actual influence side as opposed to fix fixed side on the on the monthly basis. Now with the cost of service principles, one thing that we have to keep keep account for is there's a lot of competing objectives when it comes to cost of service principles. You know, one thing on the utilities, you want to make sure you have sound, stable revenue. But then you also want to make sure that's affordable to your customers. Those are competing against each other. So if one thing that is very important is affordability, then that means put a little bit more on the cost recovery on the on the usage side instead of the fixed side. Because if you have customers that are low income or fixed incomes, then you want to make sure that if they do don't use that much water, that the fixed charge that they get charged every single month isn't substantially high for them. And then another thing, efficiency versus conservation. Efficiency doesn't mean you're using, you're cutting water as much as possible. Efficiency means you're just using water efficiently. Think about Starbucks. Starbucks may use a lot of water, but they're they use water very efficiently for their business practice, even though the volume of water they use is substantial. Whereas conservation really just means reduce water usage. So it's a little bit different there. You could achieve reduced water usage by promoting efficient water use. And I'll go down to the to the last one. Defensibility versus customers' understanding. We could have layers and layers of analysis to tick and tie it to the nth degree, but then it gets very convoluted and complicated and then it gets hard to understand to the layperson. So we need want to make sure that it's also straightforward and a customer can project what their future bills would be when they look at the rate structure based on what they're going to use. Here's some of of the definitions that we have and there's some of that that should be part or if it's not part of your agenda, we could circulate it to you. But this gives you understanding of those objectives and what does that mean from a rate standpoint? Administrative ease, easy to administer for staff and to do annual updates. Affordability, maintain the price of water for essential use at the lowest cost possible. Conservation, that aims to reduce total water. Customer understanding, the ability for the rate structure to be explained and understood by customers. Defensibility, that's where we come in and that's our biggest part is to make sure that the rates comply Prop 218 and could hold in in a court setting. Efficiency aims to reduce wasteful water use, so that's different than conservation. And that's based on a determined benchmark for efficiency. As example, if we do change it to tiers, one water efficiency standard is what's from the state that the state wants you to achieve fifty five gallons per capita per day for indoor use. And then that's by twenty twenty three and then by twenty five, they want you to then achieve fifty gallons per capita per day. So there are water efficiency standards out there already in the statutes and the water code. Equity, rates are perceived to be fair and costs are allocated based on customer share. That's where we want to make sure that whatever rate structure we we identify, we want to clearly show that if commercial has a twenty percent burden on the water system, then they're paying twenty percent of the cost. And if residential is eighty percent, they're paying eighty percent. That's going to be important to tick and tie those two together. Revenue sufficiency, that's ability to generate adequate revenue to ensure requirements are met. So that's that's possible irrespective of how much is on the fixed side versus the variable side. But then one other thing we want to make sure is revenue stability. There's certain amount of revenue you want to make sure is constant, continuously come in month after month, predictable. And that's important for meeting your debt debt service payments. It's also important to make sure that you're able to move forward with your capital projects in that year and not have to stop or delay them because you need revenue to come in. And I'm sorry, I should have said before, but if you guys have questions while I'm going through this, please feel free to get my attention. And I'm more than happy to, I'd rather have this more dialogue than me just go through a presentation than we answer questions at the end.
Just real quick question then. I mean, I would ask it at the end anyways, but since fresh my mind. We've had some businesses that talk about being they're they're questioning or they're upset why they say that their water usage, their their freshwater usage is tied to their to their sewer usage. Like it's being tied like 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 they're like people are assuming or the city is assuming that if they use a thousand gallons, that they're discharging a thousand and they're being charged accordingly. But like landscaping, for example, that water does not reach this, you know, all not all water used reaches the sewer. You mentioned conservation versus efficiency. Well, conservation obviously is just how much, maybe you're just not using as much water. But efficiency would be like, you know, I use, you know, I don't know, I I take a bath and then I take the bath water and use to water my plants or, you know, being efficient with that water. So obviously, if I'm really efficient with my water, I might use, I might be using five hundred gallons, but I'm only discharging maybe a hundred. So why why on commercial, at least in GALT, are those rates kind of tied together? And if I am I off base on that?
No, no problem. So when we do analysis, that's a very common question, not just in GALT, but in everywhere. What we do is we do use return factors to allocate the cost between all the customer classes. So typically, commercial is going to have a return factor to to become influent of anywhere from eighty to ninety percent of their water usage. Granted, if they have landscaping, then that could be more on the on the lower side of the percentage where there it could be even seventy five percent. But what we do is once when we we use return factors, so we're allocating the correct amount of cost to commercial. And then when we get to the end result of their revenue requirement for making it easy to administer, we we are then spreading that cost based on eighty percent of their usage over all their units of water. So then you don't, your billing system doesn't need to account for stop at eighty percent or stop at eighty five percent. It spreads the cost over all units of water and it and it makes the unit rate be lower, but the cost does take into account the return factor that goes to the wastewater plant.
I'd like to also make a comment about the irrigation. We have irrigation meters. We encourage businesses to separate out the water from their inside the building use. Some of the some of the commercial establishments have been around for a lot of years. They might have a couple of bushes out front or whatever. But when you look at something like Cardinal Glass where they have large landscaped area, they have an irrigation meter. They have a different charge for that and they're charged for their irrigation only on one meter. The other meter goes into their building. So so we have that ability to help the customer separate, you know, help them separate the irrigation. They feel that irrigation is a large component of their.
There's there is a cost to that meter if say a smaller business wanted to to, let's say, Mr. Sandu wanted to do that on his hotel and he wanted to have his irrigation water meter set. I mean, there's a cost associated with the installation of that meter, correct?
Correct, and I think he has an irrigation meter.
Okay, I was using an example, but.
Yeah, but that's that's what we encourage that to to separate that out because we know it's going to benefit them.
So correct me if I'm wrong, and I apologize that I don't know this, but inbound water, water is not metered. Is there is a difference between commercial and residential? So tell me if there is. Water's not metered in and out, it's only metered in one way, right? Or am I wrong?
One way, yes.
Right, so it's metered on the inbound, right? So that's what I'm saying. So I have some small businesses that have come to me and saying, you know, why isn't water, you know, they're always assuming that we're discharging X amount and they're being charged and they don't think it's fair because, you know, maybe they're just being efficient with their water. So that's that's my concern.
Yeah, and that's why we don't, we're not, we, in our analysis, we don't assume a hundred percent of their water usage is going is becoming, all of it's becoming influent. We do a factor of the water use to say if you're a certain business, your ninety percent of your usage is then going to the treatment plant. Or if they are a business that does have substantial landscape, then we might do a return factor of eighty percent or seventy five percent. So then we are not charging, when we allocate cost to commercial, we are accounting for the fact that not all their water use is then becoming influent. But from a billing standpoint, it'll be very, I guess, significant administration where if you have to put a limit on every single commercial customer of what is the amount that they don't get charged up to. And so once we do it in our analysis, we then say for administrative ease, we allocate it correctly based on a reduced amount of their water usage. We're not assuming a hundred percent of it. But then that cost, we then say, but we'll spread it over all the units that's built. So then it's just easier to have, it has a, we then have a lower rate per unit that we then could charge all units of water. So I will show that in more detail when we do the analysis.
Yeah, I know that we, this will probably be a discussion. We could continue. I don't want to take up a lot of time on that. I just wanted to touch on it. Just a couple other real quick questions.
Yes.
Real quick answers to the SRF one and two, when do those expire?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I believe there were twenty year loans.
Yeah, they, Mayor, they were twenty year loans. One of them's about halfway through right now, number one, and the other one's just about five years into it.
Okay, so like a third, okay, thank you. And then my other question is just. And then my other question is um, just just speaking, you know, broad, just for the common person watching this. Um, you know, what, what, what typically is driving rates? I mean, is it, is it a common, is it a supply and demand issue where we're, we don't have as much water available, so we're having, or is it just the cost of, is it the cost of mandates from the state and we're having to do all these additional things and, and having to have our operators, you know, all the cost of having to certify people and the cost of electricity or the plumbing? What, what, what essentially, when people hear rate increase, they want to know what, what is driving typically that rate increase? Is it just that people, the operators are getting paid more because of cost of living or is it multi-factor? It's just a brief answer.
Briefly, it's everything we touch, whether it's power, whether it's uh, chemicals, certification, as you mentioned. I will say, when you look at the SRF loans, one and two, that was a hundred percent regulatory required, one hundred percent. We had to do those improvements. The state required us to do those improvements. So, so it was a hundred percent. Most of the utilities are regulatory controlled. If, if, I had a finance director, I hope there's no finance director going to take offense to this, who actually called me up, um, he, he was new. And he called me up and he said, hey, we're, we're running over on our chlorine use in our water treatment. You need to back it down. And it's just laughable. You can't back it down because you controlled regulatory wise. We try to go out there and find the best prices for the different, you know, facilities, the different things we need, but we have to do it. Um, so, so you, you have to say on the wastewater, it's mostly regulatory. But the regulatory requires you to have certain amount of certification, certain amount of operators, certain amount of maintenance people, and it just goes on and on and on. You know, laboratory analysis and everything. So all of it hits, gets hit. And when we're doing the financial plan and we're looking at the cost of service, we're going to put some factors in there. You know, like if we think fifty homes or seventy-five homes are going to come on a year, we're going to put that in there to try to help stretch our rates, you know, keep our rates lower. You know, there's things that we can help predict, I mean, can, can predict that we can, we can move around on. We have to have our system, the water and the wastewater meet regulatory requirements. And, and we try to find the best efficient way of doing it.
That, well, your comment leads me to my last question and I'll finish up here was you mentioned that, um, you know, you're not allowed to collect more than the cost, the cost of, of, of providing that service. Can, can things like what you mentioned, like where you're predicting, you're like, oh, we're going to have, like, we're going to need a certain maintenance requirements to the plant coming up, so we're going to need X amount of money for that. So that can be all. So can you predict and, and um, guesstimate costs that are going to be needed and those can be considered the cost of providing that service and those are factored into the rate? So it's not actually what you're providing at that given time that you forecast. Is that allowed?
Yes, that is allowed as well as uh, having healthy reserves and usually with reserves, we have a bandwidth that we want to be within. Uh, where we have a minimum and an ideal target. And then that also gives you some flexibility of falling within that range. Um, one thing to follow up on, on, on what are some of the drivers to rates? You know, utilities are very capital intensive with maintenance and unfortunately that, that particular cost is not seen by customers. You know, it's all underground. It's not, it's not something that's, you know, very sexy to talk about, but it's very capital intensive and those are some of the primary drivers that we have seen.
All right. Well, thank you for answering my questions.
And see now I'm going to continue to move forward. Um, these are some of the rate alternatives that are available. Um, I think this is a broader spectrum than um, what we'll probably be investigating for uh, the city of Galt. Just because you are, you do have one water supply. Um, usually when there's agencies that have multiple water supplies um, to serve their customers, then that's where we get more involved into having multiple tiers. Uh, but um, I think one of the, one, the main ones would be uniform rates, maybe a two-tier rate structure. And then consumption-based fix, that's really just uh, you know, using, having a fixed charge based on like a rolling average of actual water usage from your customers. And then with wastewater, your residential customers are on flat rates right now. Uh, that's very common in the industry where the amount of influent that's coming from single family, we base it on that water efficiency standard um, at the state level of fifty-five gallons per capita per day. And then we extrapolate that out. So then it's very homogeneous and consistent. That's why you could convert them to flat. And then for commercial, we would recommend flow-based rates, which is what you have now. And then the strength factor is accounted for right now with your rates of low, medium, high. So then you could, you could charge them based on the type of influent that's going to the treatment plant. Where it's, you know, restaurants have a stronger um, influent going to the plant versus just your standard retail store that might just have a bathroom. And then strategic objectives, some of the things that uh, you want to consider is, you know, how much do you want to recover from the fixed charge? As I mentioned, our baseline to start, we're going to, we're going to start with trying to maintain it at the sixty percent as just our starting point because that's where you were before. And then we'll have alternatives of, do you want to keep it at sixty percent? Do you want to ratchet it up to sixty-five? Do you want to go down a little bit? And then obviously it's like a, it's like a teeter totter where if you do, then you know, the variable rate will go up and down as well. You know, it would be an inverse um, uh, relationship to that. And then um, with the wastewater, I think that one's going to be more just of a update and keeping your rate structure the way it is. Uh, the only other thing would be um, potentially on those SRF loans on the commercial side. One thing you would be considering is, do you want to pull it out of the commodity rate and put it as a fixed charge? Just like you have it for single family and multifamily. So I think I could see that as being one of the rate alternatives we come back to you with. Um, just thinking upfront, uh, what are, what's something that, that's a viable option? Because that SRF, those SRF loans are, are fixed cost that do not change. Any questions on that? And then in terms of the schedule for this study, uh, we had kickoff meeting with staff uh, in September. Uh, and we've been compiling, we sent out data requests, they've been compiling the data, we've been analyzing data, following up with questions. And we're right now going through a full consumption analysis of your customers and grouping them by, by their land uses. And then we're currently developing the financial plan. We're almost done with water and wastewater will follow. But we expect to um, review that with staff in January. And then we can come back to council in around February to show the financial plan of both the water and the wastewater enterprise. And when we talk about financial plan, we're not talking rates. We're looking at where, how are you looking based on the current rates that you charge today? And if we project that out with the capital costs that are coming online, how are you going to be looking in the next five years to ten years? And, and then modeling your reserve policies to make sure that you're maintaining your minimum amount that you want to achieve. And that'll be another discussion too, is we could also review your reserve policies, where they stand today and uh, we might identify certain slight adjustments to those. Or there's any recommendations that city council has in terms of maybe generate, you know, creating a rate stabilization fund or things of that sort. We could, we can launch and review as part of the financial plan workshop. And then we conclude that by March, we'll have the cost of service analysis done with rates. And then in April, which will be about two months later from the financial plan workshop, we'll come back with the rate workshop. And now we're showing, based on the proposed financial plan, here are the rates to achieve that revenue requirement. And then we, we could then review that and take your feedback, just like you did with uh, uh, definitely different, but still the same type of process of the street modifications to downtown. It'll be kind of give and take, but making sure that we meet all the regulatory requirements and your total revenue needs.
Do, do you ever uh, attempt to have moderate or very small increments every year to mitigate sticker shock? Or is that not really allowed?
Uh, absolutely. We always recommend doing more modest leveled adjustments each year to reach your goals. There will be certain circumstances where there could be some drivers, some cost drivers that gives us no choice. One of the primary ones would be if we have to maintain your bond covenants and, and bond coverage. Um, that's one. We're working with the agency in San Diego where they have to do a, like a nine percent adjustment in the first year just to meet their bond covenants. And then it goes back down to four percent. Um, so those are things that we look at. And uh, but we always recommend um, level adjustments. And I would say that the, the best way to mitigate rate increases or rate spikes would be if you're addressing your capital needs, your repair and replacement, and you're not deferring capital. Then usually those are the agencies that are always doing modest adjustments every year. Those that delay their replacement or, you know, asset management, those are the ones where eventually it catches up to them and then they have to do a huge rate spike to um, maintain their system or to not then be you know, be more proactive versus reactive to um, emergencies and things that happen with, with your infrastructure. At least that's what we have seen in, in, in our experience.
How significant is the drought effect, like on the uniform rates when uh, we have cutbacks and everybody's forced to use less, therefore they're paying less?
Yeah, well, there's another provision of law where um, with, with droughts, you're also allowed to incorporate drought rates. And that could tie to, if you have a conservation ordinance, then we would model your different stages of your conservation ordinance to show that if you're in stage one, two, three, then these are the rates that will go into effect in those stages to stay revenue neutral. And um, with, if we develop those, those also have to be in your Prop 218 notice that you send out to your customers.
Any other council have questions for Mr. Isaac?
I just have um, a comment and then a couple of questions probably for the next probably the next two workshops, but uh, thank you for the presentation and the overview of what's to come. Rate studies always um, are pretty sensitive, right?
Yes.
It's not knowing what, what is out there. Uh, I don't work in wastewater or water and the, nor the legislative processes of that are involved in that, right? And so who knows what uh, the state might be sending our way in the future. But it's, it's always nerve wracking, but I appreciate the approach of having, you know, the kickoff meeting and then now this meeting uh, to try to talk about it. I'll have quite a few questions as it relates to what is involved in a cost of service in terms of uh, labor and materials and what does that look like? Um, I'm always concerned, at least from the city's perspective, about unfunded pension liabilities and all of that and to see really where that's, that plays a part in this. And then also um, the, I did have questions on the, on the SRF. Uh, it sounds like that's going to be around for a while, both, both of them actually. Um, so uh, the one question I did have, it was on one of the slides, is twenty-six point eight million dollars that we did in improvements. Mr. Clarkson, what, what was that from and what, is that the SRF part of that?
Yeah, that's SRF number two. And, and that project was required in two thousand and ten by the state in a permit that we received. It took us a few years to design and construct it and, and get the money to, to borrow because it was a big chunk of money. So we, you know, it was a one point nine percent interest rate. It was a really good rate that we got on the SRF. But that's, was number two, SRF.
Okay, and when was that project completed?
It was substantially completed in two sixteen and finished up in two seventeen.
So pretty, so within the last five years?
Five years, yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay. Um, no, and, and again, just thank you for the presentation and the, and the information. I think it's uh, moving forward. Um, it's going to be interesting to see how this all plays out and the predictions of what, you know, the next ten years look like really for us.
Yeah, and I remember last time, you know, council was very sensitive, as all council and boards should be very sensitive on the rate increases. And one thing with like the SRF loan was, we want to make sure our customers see it so they know what is in their bill. And um, those are things that we came back with and, and made adjustments. So um, we expect that will provide um, multiple rate alternatives for council consideration before, as part of the finalizing rates.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that and, and the more alternatives, the better. Um, and uh, having these explanations through the workshops, I think are going to be important because um, how we build uh, future rates um, i- is going to be, I, I, it, obviously it's important, but, but I think the, the piece that we're really going to have to capture is um, the differences between residential and commercial. And really um, what that looks like, you know, so not just maybe a, a statement of, well, you know, residential's going to increase substantially. That's not going to work for me, right? So uh, really digging deep into what that looks like and the, and the, and the thought processes and the analysis behind how we got to that point uh, or that rate number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to take much more of your time, but um, one thing we typically do as well, because one thing I said was, you know, after five years, we need to update the entire consumption analysis to see how different customers use water and what the total usage is by the different customer classes. We also show a comparison of what's the amount of revenue that's being recovered by each class? And what's the amount of revenue that we are now allocating to each class? And we could then see like, oh, look at commercial maybe went down a little bit. Residential's liability went up and here's why, because their usage went up. And we would show that, that shifting of cost, if you will, based on the usage trends.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public comment period now. So if you are on Zoom, want to raise your hand or call in and make a public comment on this particular topic, you may do so now. Do we have any hands raised or calls online right now, Tina?
We do not.
Okay, so go ahead and finish out this minute for public comment. While we're waiting, I just thought to make a comment. I think it's funny how the state of California will require us to do things and they, but don't worry. We'll loan you the money to do it and we'll give you a great interest rate. So it's just.
And it's through reimbursement. You have to get, pay for it, then you get reimbursed.
All right, so again, public comment, about twenty seconds left on that. Do we have any public comment in the room, Tina?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isaac and Mr. Clarkson for answering our questions. Sure, this will be a long process and hopefully we'll get a lot of input from the community too. Go ahead and close the public comment period. We have no, no public comment online? Nope? Okay. Public comments now closed on this item. So now we will move on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
Hi, none this evening.
All right, I'll move on to item J, city clerk's report, subject is mayor and vice mayor appointments. Ms. Hubert?
Okay, first I'm going to let our city interim city attorney give you the rules.
Yes, uh, good evening, mayor, council. Uh, you're probably familiar with this from before, but just to recap. Um, the rules for nominations and selection of the mayor and vice mayor is a little bit different than normal motions. Um, what, um, as soon as the city clerk um, uh, takes, opens up the item, um, the, any member of the council can make a nomination for a particular member to be mayor and vice, and then, and then in the second case, the vice mayor. And um, and there is no second needed. And she will keep it open until there are no further nominations. So there could be multiple nominations on the floor. And then there will be a vote taken on each nomination in the order that the nominations were made. So for example, whoever the first person is that nominates a candidate, that will be voted on first and then it's in the subsequent order. So in the order that they were, they were nominated as opposed to the reverse order, that would normally be made if there's multiple motions for any other item. So um, Tina will open up the nominations and then she'll confirm before closing the nominations and then a vote will be taken on the nominations in the order that they were. And then a vote will be taken on the nominations in the order that they were the candidates were nominated. Any questions?
Starting with mayor and then the same thing over again.
Yes, and then after the mayor is selected, then the mayor, the current mayor, you you, Mr. Mayor, will then preside over the vice mayor. And then the the seats will change at the next meeting as far as the mayor and the vice mayor.
Okay, I hereby open the nominations for mayor.
On formal.
Nominate Rich Lozano.
Are there any other nominations before I close the nomination period? The nomination period is hereby closed. In order, I'm now going to take a roll call vote on the first nomination of Sean Farmer. Councilmember Lozano.
No.
Council, council, mayor, Mayor Farmer, councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
No.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yes.
And that is a quorum. That's three.
Thank you.
That is Sean Farmer for mayor.
So now I will accept nominations for a vice mayor. I would like to nominate that Mr. Sandu continue as vice mayor for another year. Would anybody else like to make an alternate nomination?
I'd like to nominate Councilman Papino.
So we have a nomination for Councilman Sandu and a nomination for Councilman Papino. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lozano.
This is for?
Yes, Paul Sandu.
No.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
No.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yes.
And we have three votes for Vice Mayor Sandu.
All right, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for your support. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Do we need public comment on this? I think so. All right, moving on to item K, comments by staff. Mr. Selling?
Thank you, mayor. I see Mr. Solis in the room, so I'll give him first opportunity.
Mayor and city council, congratulations to both of you. So I want to talk about our lighting of the night parade that we had over this weekend or the event. I want to thank some sponsors that we had. We had California Waste, who paid for Paige Lamson to come out and give out our photos. This is a photo of of myself, city manager, Jackie Garcia, Casey Bacarez, and Mary Beth. So they did a great job with that. The Galt Chamber assisted with the pictures, sponsored cookies, donated cookies for our cookie decorating, Save Mart, and Valley Oaks Elementary. So I just want to give a thanks to all those people that helped with that. I want to give a special thanks to Public Works for helping us out clean up after the event and my staff who worked really hard. And cleaning up after the event was a challenge and they did an incredible job. Next slide, I want to talk about an event that's going on this weekend. It's called Breakfast with Santa. It's Saturday, December 11th. The only problem is, next slide, please. It is sold out. So if you have your tickets, that's great. If not, they even added another 25 tickets, but that also sold out. If you want to stop by and say hi, that'd be great. And then let's start talking about our next event, just so you guys can put it on your calendar, our Winter Bird Festival, which will be Saturday, February 5th. We will be doing a combination of virtual and in-house events, activities. So please mark your calendar for that. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. And please pass on to your staff. I thank you for the good job they did cleaning. I know I spoke to you about that already, but I just want to say that publicly. They did a good job. I'm very picky, they did a good job.
All right, Ms. Mendez.
Good evening. I don't have anything further this evening, but congratulations to everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. I see Mr. Hoffman, looks like he's next.
Good evening, council members. Nothing coming before you anytime soon from community development, but we do have our final planning commission meeting coming up on Thursday. Other than that, thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Ms. Van Stein. She's ready to go.
Good evening, council. I have no updates this evening, thank you.
Chief Kalanowski.
Good evening. I let everybody know I have about a 20-minute presentation, so stand by, right? I'm kidding. Hey.
King, parents and gifts to the council members. This is our newest endeavor to do some recruiting.
Thank you.
For potential applicants. I know some book care businesses and different things. That's a patch, a joint LPD patch with our recruiting email address.
Historically, we provide swag at different events that we attend, recruiting fairs and different things like this and business cards. We thought this was a little different approach to sort of get something in somebody's hand who's faced with seeing, you know, 20, 30, 40 police agencies that they're looking at. And that was a design by Officer Kyle Slater. He put that together. He's the lead on our recruiting team. And so that's something that we give out. I know some of you have businesses and work in law enforcement in different places. So hopefully you'll prominently display that and maybe we'll get some people interested in in that. And then this week, and I'm sure Mr. Lozano will mention it, so I won't seal his thunder on that, but CSD Fire is doing our sirens with Santa on Wednesday and Thursday up at the headquarters from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The police department will have participation and be involved in that. And so we look forward to seeing folks up there for that. That's all I have for tonight's presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hubert?
Nothing further, thanks.
Hello, Mr. Splendario.
No updates at this time, thank you.
All right, well, for myself, I'll just kind of echo the other staffs. I think there was a great effort between Parks and Rec and PD and Public Works, you know, in in all the behind the scenes and and active traffic control and whatnot associated with the the lighting of the tree and and the light parade. And it was a fantastic event. I was I was excited to 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 come and and see it firsthand. So it's my third year here, so I finally got to see it. So that was great. I I also want to just pay tribute to Mr. Adams and Mr. Ballier for their service and anyone else who's served and or are serving. Yeah, I I can't stress enough, I guess I come from a military family myself and and just appreciate the service for those who have sacrificed for us as we remember Pearl Harbor today. So with that, I'll congratulate the mayor and vice mayor. And that's it for me tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. We'll start with Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you, all the staff gave us a good report, all the agenda item. I also like to thank you for the public comment and all the public came in to the open chamber today. Thank you for everyone, you know, sitting there for two to three hours to personal meeting, come to the chamber. And I also attended the Galt Chamber luncheon last week. Congratulations to Back Alley Brew House for the business of the year. They do a lot of our community, we appreciate it. I also attended Christmas activities and prayed this past past Friday. I think this year may have been the biggest turnout I have ever seen. It was great, community get together and enjoyable evening. The city department did a great job organizing this event. And lastly, I would like to congratulate to Mayor Farmer and other G R A mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino?
Well, I can't say it enough, hats off to all the staff and all the departments watching the the tree lighting and the parade go off like a well-oiled machine was great. And then also hats off to the whole community. I have heard reviews from some people that attended parades in unnamed neighboring cities. And by far, this was the best with the community participation and the variety and involvement, so and and viewership. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you to everybody that served, you know, considering Pearl Harbor. Thank you for the staff for hanging out with us for three hours and paying attention. Thank you for all your hard work of the present, the reports. I appreciate all the work that you do. Congratulations, Mayor Farmer and Vice Mayor Sandu. And the parade, I almost didn't go, but I was very happy that I did. It was quite, it was much larger than I anticipated. I think it was a great success and it's really good to see. And hopefully it's a trend of things to come. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, thanks. And I also want to echo, thank you to staff and certainly the community for the wonderful turnout at the parade. And and there was a line for families to take pictures. I was standing there with Bonnie for a while and, oh, my goodness, you know, wrangling the the families. It was it was, there were a lot of people there and people walking through to to see the parade. And it was awesome. And and I would also state that I have spoken to people that have went to that recently went to parades in other cities. And it sounds like ours was probably by far the the best. As the chief mentioned, the fire department, our local fire department here, is doing a drive-through parade, Santa with sirens parade again, as they did last year up at the training facility on East Stockton Boulevard, 7:00 to 9:00 tomorrow and Thursday. I will be out there Thursday. And but it's it's awesome. There's a lot more in store this year for for in terms of decorations. And and I like the fact that that they're they're getting the word out early. So get out there, check it out, it's a lot of fun. Takes about, probably about a half hour to drive through it. And bring an unwrapped toy, they're doing a toy drive over there too for the for the kids of Galt and Elk Grove. So make sure you get out there and do that. Just wanted to mention that Mayor Farmer and I had our first solid waste ad hoc meeting. So we are moving forward on that, just to let the community know. It's even through the holidays, it's going to be work ahead. And so I appreciate staff and and Mayor Farmer for embarking on this and getting some work done. Then that was, and then on the 22nd, I attended a meeting with Disability Rights of California. It's a nonprofit organization that promotes and is a, quite honestly, really just advocate for people with disabilities. Doesn't matter what age, what disability, so anything from physical disabilities to learning disabilities and whatnot. And the and the meeting was for to get input from the our community about how businesses and how the city can really do a lot more to help people with disabilities get employed and and such. So it was pretty good, a small turnout, but very, very good feedback. We talked about maybe partnering, they them Disability Rights California partnering with our local chamber, possibly businesses to do some education on hiring people with disabilities and and such. So really was pretty cool. And so that was on the 22nd. And of course, 28th, the police department here had a small memorial for the animal patrol officer, Roy Markham, who was murdered here in our city on November 28th of 2012. We had a wreath laying ceremony right out front. And it was, like I said, small, but but very well done. And I want to thank the department, the honor guard, the chief and 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 all of the staff that that helped put that together and who attended. So that's all for me. I appreciate it. Everybody have a wonderful next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. First, thank you for attending that ceremony at the memorial. I was out of town on vacation and I missed that. So I appreciate those that are in were in attendance for that. Just want to echo a couple of my fellow council members. Thank you to Parks and Rec, Public Works, anybody else involved. Lighting the night celebration, totally phenomenal. It's great to see a huge turnout. Just, you know, this year, always been in the flow, always been in the parade, whether it was family or or as a council member or whatever, this year it just kind of ran out of time. And so I decided to walk the parade route. I was alongside my fellow council members. And it was this kind of a different dynamic to do that. It was really special to see, you know, the kids sitting on the sides of the curb, you know, with their parents and handing out candy and stuff. So it's just, it was a great parade. I heard it was the best we had so far as far as attendance and entries. Just super excited to see that kind of thing because that's what, you know, living in a small town is about. So and thank you, Mr. Solis, again, for your staff doing an excellent job cleaning up. And there's a little bit of grief on that, the amount of mess that was made. But you guys, you could, can't even tell anything whatever happened, so thank you again for that. I did too, attend the chamber luncheon. Congratulations to Back Alley Brew House for their their business of the year. Want to thank Mr. Ballier and Mr. Adams for coming tonight. Thank you again, gentlemen, for your service. And I want to thank my fellow council members and vice mayor for renominating me and having confidence in in me and allowing to serve again as a mayor. It's been an honor and I I will do the best I can this year again. So I appreciate that, thank you. And last, I have a couple of items I just wanted to suggest. I was going to bring this up last time, but it ran out of time. But I had spoken with Mr., I spoke with the city attorney and and Mr. Hines in our agenda meeting. And there was some discussion about possibly making some change to item E, which is the 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 council reports on regional boards, et cetera. And there was some talk about maybe the council was interested in changing that to not just be reports on regional boards, but also reporting on maybe other meetings or other events that we had participated in an official capacity. We feel like it wouldn't really change the meeting as far as time because we still would do that at the end. But we feel like there's a lot of viewing and participation in the meetings early on. And sometimes if we were to, you know, like a chamber luncheon, for example, it's nice to be able to say those things in the beginning of the meeting and think or or talk about an event we participated in and have the community hear us instead of having to wait till the end. So I would want to know if that would be something we could put on a future agenda item to have a further discussion on it, to see about revamping that and doing some changes just with with when we do our comments. Would would anybody be interested in having that back for a discussion?
Yeah, I would, that'd be fun.
Anybody else? We need three.
I'd be willing to.
Okay. Okay, is that clear, Mr. Selling? Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I just make a comment real quick? I would just say that I I don't want to put a timeline on that because that, I think, I think our plates are going to be really full in the next couple of months. So if you could work with the city manager on the timing of that. I mean, it shouldn't be six months from now, but but certainly not in the next few meetings.
Right.
Because I know next meeting is going to be a long one and certainly the second one in, or I'm sorry, the fourth, the second, sorry, the third Tuesday in January is going to be a long one, I think.
Yeah, no, agreed. And the thing of it is, we talked about, you know, it doesn't really increase the length of the meeting, so it's just, we're just reversing things because people don't tend to hang on to stuff. So, all right, well, we'll discuss that, of course, when it comes back. Get together with Mr. Hines and yourself and figure that out, when the timing would be fit. And then the other thing is, you know, I probably could discuss this with Lorenz when he's back, but I just wanted to point it out now just because I wanted to make it more of an official thing than a more of an ask. But I don't, correct me if I'm, I'm not sure if having these is a requirement of our guidelines that we have to operate under. And I would like to find out if it's not, then if we could possibly reorganize this dais because I don't like the fact that J, I mean, it might just be an optics thing, but I think that if this is not required and we're all wearing masks and being appropriate guidelines, I would like to see what guidelines we have to fit within or where we can all get five of, all five of us up at the dais and we don't have to have Mr. Vandenberg sitting down below, if that's possible. So, if you could pass that on to Mr. Hines, I would appreciate that.
I'll do that, thanks.
Thank you. And with that, that's all I have tonight. Want to thank you all for sticking around so late. I know it's been a long meeting, but I appreciate you're all participating in our first live meeting. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at, is that clock still wrong?
No.
It's right, okay. At 9:02 p.m.